Meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health to order today is Thursday, August 15, 2019. It is just 8:30 a.m. At the Community Center in Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. In our very own Carson City, we're also on cable TV. If you get cable. Do you get cable, Jean? Anybody get cable out there? Everybody get cable?
Yeah.
I'll call you Jean Gill. Yeah? Okay. Going crazy this morning. Okay, and it's also streaming on the Internet. All right, can we have a roll call?
Supervisor Giomi?
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here.
Coramis President?
Thanks. Okay, let's, could we call on our good friend Nick Emery of the Hope Crossing Community Church to get us on, start on the right foot? Morning, Nick.
Good morning, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for our city. God, we pray for all of the students who will be going back to school, some who've already started. We ask that you would just bless and protect our schools, our teachers and their staff, God, that you would give that board and that leadership at each school wisdom and understanding as they deal with some amazing things and amazing opportunities throughout the year. We pray for their safety and we thank you, God, for this board and their leadership. Give them wisdom and understanding and a confidence in to do what's right this day as they decide many things that are important to our city. We also pray for our Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department, God. We ask that you would keep them safe and bless them and bless them in the work that they do, God. We love you and we love this city and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Nick, well said. Could I call on our good friend Ken Sandage to get us started on the, with the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Crosstalk)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. All right, let's move on to item number five, public comment. This is a time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the purview or authority of this public body. Public comment time. Yep, come on up, Gil. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. For the record, Gil Yonak, Carson City. I want to, I'll be brief. I appreciate the intentions of what's going on with our public shooting range here in Carson City. This time of the year, people who have put in for tags know what's going to be happening with their hunting season and a lot of folks are out at the range trying to, you know, zero in their rifles and try new ammunition and trying to be ahead of the game. I appreciate the intentions of the gun club, but I, it appears to me they're getting a little heavy-handed and acting like it's their own little personal fiefdom out there, deciding when it's going to be open and who's going to be able to use it and all of a sudden what you're going to have to pay to use it. The residents of Carson City, the homeowners, the business owners are already paying to keep that range up and to keep it operating. Now, all of a sudden, we see there's the idea of charging you a fee, a daily fee or an annual fee, and I think that's going to backfire. I think that's going to cause a lot of people to go out into the canyons, up in the hills, where they don't have to pay anybody for it and oftentimes either leave a mess out there or, or as we have seen already this year, have started numerous little fires that sometimes bloom into bigger fires. So my, my concern is, who's watching what this club is doing and how are they reporting it back to either the Board of Supervisors or to the public so we understand what's behind the ideas and the, and the concepts that they're trying to change at the range?
Let me just say, I think from what I know, and I'm not involved in the task force, but I, what I under know is your comments are timely, let me say it like that. Timely.
Well, I, I bring it up because, you know, I'm, I want to go out there when, usually early in the morning when there's no wind and then not a lot of people. Now, I have left very early some mornings because of some things that people out there do, which is totally unsafe. So I said, I'll come back tomorrow because I don't want to get into an argument with some of these guys about when they want to go out and change their targets and they don't understand about calling the range safe and what that really means. So, you know, most people understand that the challenge of going out to the range and operating in a, in a safe manner and some people just forget or they were never taught or they just don't care. So, yes, I, I agree that controls on the range are necessary, but I think you have to be reasonable. And the idea of charging now for something that's been free ever since the range was created is going to cause more problems than what people want to deal with.
Do you support use of range safety officers? Do you support use of range safety officers?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the fact that the club is willing to do that and volunteers in the club take their time to be out there to monitor what's going on when the range is open to the public. I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, but it doesn't stop there. It seems like they want more and more control over what anybody can do and when they can do it, and I, I think that's not right.
All right. Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Say hello to everybody up on the hill up there.
Well.
All right. All right, another public comment? Come on up. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Lisa Partee.
Hi, Lisa.
Carson City resident for, born and raised. My concern today is the roundabout at Stewart and Carson. I'm perplexed as to the design, I'm number one perplexed as to the need for it. It's a great intersection, it's probably the least problematic intersection in town. I have never seen an accident there. Traffic flows, the lights change rapidly, nobody has to wait there very long. But the drawing by the city engineer, you have two lanes going south around the roundabout and people have, in Carson City, don't know roundabouts and I understand there's an instructional video you can watch and learn. Fifth Street took forever for people to learn and they're still learning it. But there's only one lane going northbound, so to choke off the two lanes going both directions and making one, if you're going northbound on Carson Street, you have to be in one lane and the other lane's for Stewart, it's ridiculous, it's not, there's no balance. And it's going to interrupt and, and we've learned this with the Carson Street improvement, that when you take it down to one lane each direction, there's always somebody who's going to try and cut you off. And I've been cut off more times than I care to say. I have witnessed, thank goodness, them getting pulled over when they've almost hit me, when it goes down to one, there's always somebody, there's building, buildings coming up all over the place. We are inviting thousands of people to come here. Why we would choke it off to one lane going northbound is beyond me, or why we even need a roundabout there and when we could spend that money fixing side streets, as the guy wrote to the, letter to the editor, we could use that money for street repairs where it's mostly needed.
Okay. I tell you what, if it's okay with you, we're going to be taking this up a little later in the agenda. We'll incorporate your comment, your comments here today under that agenda item as well as on public comments, so it's put in both places. I mean, I want to also understand, I don't know if you were here last night for the RTC meeting where they talked about it as well, but we'll, we'll incorporate your comments and if you're still here and you want to make them again, you can do that, but otherwise, you know, we'll just incorporate your comments with, when it comes up, because it'll be heard this morning sometime as well.
I very much appreciate it and I won't be here, we're leaving town right now. Thank you so much.
And they're listening.
Appreciate it.
I see them here, thank you. All right. Anybody else this morning? Come on up. I wondered where you went this morning.
I had to take care of his business.
Okay.
You said I pushed this button?
Yeah, I think it's on, is there, it should show a green light at the bottom of the stem there. Push it. There you go.
Asher, over here. Over here. He's my chief security officer also. All right. Mayor Board of Supervisors, I come here today, my name is Ken Miller and I come here today to bring two items to your attention and I believe you all should have a copy. I'm just going to read off script, I just need to get it on record and my, my work will be done here. Topic Sonoma Park. Sonoma Dog Park has become much more popular and busy. I present to you observations and complaints from the many grateful visitors who visit Sonoma Park on a daily basis. No rules posted, and trust me, they're needed. Watering in AM causes havoc for dog owners because of all the standing water. Water in the AM also brings mosquitoes, which have bitten severely many visitors to the park west now in next county. Water should be done at 9:00 p.m., the noise ordinances at 10:00 p.m., no standing water for dogs and less mosquitoes and muddy dogs. Rocks should be placed around dog water in area to support proper drainage. Sitting water causes dog stomach issues. The kids playground. The water fountain has been inoperable for most of the summer. When it does work, it leaks constantly from the civil metal entrance area located under the main water fountain. Because of this, it leaves a constant large puddle and waste gallons of water each day. This is unacceptable. In conclusion, please take time to address these issues. If you would like my assistance in any way or continue our conversation, please contact me at SmilankettiMiller@yahoo.com or SpeakForFree.org. The next topic, if you don't mind me continuing, because I don't want to tie up your time. Quality of food served at the Carson City Senior Center. The Carson City Senior Center promotes many fundraising events and uses the Meals on Wheels program as its promotion point. The quality of food for the amount of money brought in on behalf of Meals on Wheels program and the lunch served in the Carson City Center is of poor quality and our, our seniors deserve better. I estimate that the money brought in from bingo, 50-50s, food sales at events and thrift store is around $3,000 to $6,000 a month. Also, $3.60 is paid for all Meals on Wheels recipients from the government. Also, $3 is paid for each meal served in the Carson City Senior Center dining room from the government and there's also a donation box also included, which sometimes gets money put in it. Example, okay, the more people you feed, the less cost per meal. Example, frozen chicken breast costs $1.79. If you purchase 100, the cost drops to $1.29. If you purchase 500, the chicken breast, the cost drops to $0.89 per chicken. The math does not jive. The food served at the Carson City Senior Center is of poor quality overall and can be observed by anyone trained in food services, in which I am. The lunch menu from the last Friday of last month was, and I quote, "A scoop of macaroni and cheese, baked potato, sour cream, no butter, creamed spinach and a small container of Trix yogurt." Are you kidding me? Again, I state that I know food in numbers. Carson City's elderly population, whom many struggle to survive, deserve one quality meal a day. Let's make sure this happens. Please improve the size and quality of food served to our cherished elderly population of Carson City. Any further questions, you know how to contact me, I'm not here to bitch and moan, I appreciate what you do and I respect you guys, just wanted to get it on record.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
All right. Come on, Asher.
Let's go.
Doesn't want to leave. There he goes. All right, you got it. All right, any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any, so then we'll close off public comment, this part of public comment and again, we will be taking it as we go through the agenda here today. All right, let's take up item number six, possible approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of July 18, 2019? Motion to order Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for July 18, 2019 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay. I don't see it, come up here on the... Is it up, Kathy or none?
It's just there.
Okay. I didn't see it. Oh, you got it. Okay. All right. All right, let's take, on the agenda, anybody, any member of the, any changes that you know of city manager?
No changes.
Board members, you want to make any changes? I don't see any. Any changes to consent agenda while we're on changes? I don't see anybody there. Anybody from the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? I don't see any. Okay. So then, without objection, we will take the agenda as published and will adopt the agenda as published and will now move to item number eight, special presentations, and I ask the board to move to the, move from the dais to the floor and we'll take up some very important things that are important to our community. I need the, there you go, you got it. The first item I'd like to bring up is, is Emma here this morning? Emma Howling? Emma, come on up. Is it How, it's Holling. Holling, Emma Howling. Good morning, Emma, how are you? Everybody know, you know, you're 13, right? And is your grandmother here today? And, well, let me just say this, for, for everybody who doesn't know, can I talk to them a little bit, can I tell them a little bit about what happened? Okay, well, here's, Emma was home with her grandmother, who's here this morning, and her grandmother, I think, had a stroke and called, so Emma called 911, followed all the instructions of 911 in a competent, calm and compassionate manner and 91, our folks, our emergency folks got there, were able to take care of her grandmother, but I think her grandmother would agree that without Emma being around, she might not be here today. And so, Emma's an example of a child or young person making a great choice and doing the right thing for their family and doing the right thing for our community. And so, Emma, on behalf of a grateful community, we'd like to present you with this certificate of commendation and says the community of Carson City commends you for your courageous and successful efforts on July 17, 2019, while attending to a serious medical emergency relating to your grandmother. Your confidence, compassion and steadfastness in the face of adversity may not only have saved your grandmother's life, but is a model for others who may find themselves in like circumstances. Signed by me, the mayor, on behalf of your community. I'd like to give you this and if you'd like to say a couple words, you want to do that? You don't have to. All right, let's come up, all right, the answer to that was no. All right. Let's come on up here, we'll get a picture. Can we get grandmother and parents up here? Come on up. Anybody else too who was associated there? We got a picture. Okay, come on up, come on up here. All right, come on up.
She did call 911, but at the same time, she kept two other children as calm as she could. She then called my husband, who's working out of state during the week, so he would know what was going on. She then called her uncle so he could help and kept calm the whole time. I was a nervous wreck, I was, where are the kids, where are the kids? But she did a great job and I'll never, ever be able to thank her enough. Thank you.
All right. All right. What, okay. What, there you go. Going to say something? No? You okay? All right, all right. We're going to, all right, folks, what, okay. All right, thank you very much. All right.
It's a big crowd.
It's a big crowd. You're, you're a wonderful young person, keep, keep it up. You're a wonderful young person and you're a role model for what everybody else should be too, so, good move, good move, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Shout out, okay? All right, now let's move to congratulating the employees who helped make Carson City a better place and a, a quality place to live and, in my view, the best place to live in the United States and in fact, in the world. And so, I'd like to call up Christine Tuttle. Christine, where are you this morning? Christine is the Assistant to the Sheriff. I see you there and then over there too. Christine, in recognition and appreciation for five years of continuous and dedicated service to Carson City, let us give you this award for, demonstrate our, our thank you and ask you that you continue on for another many years. Okay, come on up. Jeff Schultz. Jeff. I see you out and around too, Jeff. Yeah, I do. Jeff is a sewer technician too and in recognition and appreciation for five years of continuous and dedicated service to our great community, on behalf of a grateful community, Jeff, thank you very much for what you do and thanks for keeping everything flowing. Is that a good way? All right, thanks. Come on up here. All right, Brian Elder. Good morning, Brian. Brian is a project manager, he's been with us for five years. Brian, thank you for all that you do to make Carson City a better place to live and we look forward to many more years. So, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you very much for your service, okay? All right, come on up here, come on. Vanessa, Judicial Clerk One. Hey, good morning. Here's, the third branch of government is showing up here, that's good. All right. Vanessa, in appreciation for, how many years? 10 years. I got it here too, but I want to hear you say it. All right. And thank you, I want to, on behalf of a grateful community, we want to thank you for 10 years of continuous and dedicated service to Carson City and we look forward to having you serve many more years to help us make this city continue on in an orderly and good fashion. Thank you very much. Okay, come on, all right. Steve, come on up. Where's Steve? Steve Olson? Hey, good morning, okay. Yeah, the other Steve, the other Steve. Steve, Steve is the Deputy Sheriff. He's, where's your uniform this morning? This is your uniform, okay. All right, I'm kidding you, of course. Steve, in recognition and appreciation for your 15 years of continuous and dedicated service to Carson City, thank you on behalf of all of us for keeping us safe and thank you for making Carson City a better place to live, work, play and just be safe. Thank you, Steve. All right. Firefighter Scott O'Brien, where's Scott? Morning, Scott, how are you?
Good, how are you?
There was, you guys were out running around the street this morning early, huh?
Back out again, we're missing about half the crews that were.
Yeah, that's what I kind of thought, but you know, it's more important where they are, we'll make it up to them somehow. Scott, Scott, on behalf of a grateful community, let me thank you on behalf of the board and your community for your service to Carson City for 15 years. You folks, as we just mentioned, you know, a lot of you are out taking care of another issue this morning and that's how it often happens with our folks in, in Carson City, all of our public safety and public works folks who have to be there on a moment's notice. On behalf of all of us, thank you for 15 years and we look for many more years. Thank you. Okay, Scott. All right, thank you. All right, I think it's Jeffrey Friedlander here. Morning, Jeff. Firefighter, paramedic. Jeff, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our congratulations and our thank you for 15 years of continuous and dedicated service to Carson City. Once again, I know you folks are, you know, you're always out there looking after us, so Jeff, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for 15 years and we hope to have many more. 15 at least. Is that all right? All right, there you go. Karen Fisher. Karen, I should have got that right, Karen. Come on up. Third branch of the government, once again, Court Fiscal Services Manager. How many years has it been? You don't look that old. 25 years of, yeah, it's probably, that's amazing. Did you hear what she said? More than, she's worked here more than half her life. Now, that's dedication for you. So Karen, on behalf of a grateful community, let me say thank you for 25 years of dedicated service to Carson City, making a lot of, a whole lot of things work a lot better in our community for, you know, we can really say we are the best community around here. Thank you very much. All right, Karen, come on up. Is that it? Yeah, we do. All right, so now we're going to get a picture, we all, I think we could do it. Let's get one picture like this and we'll get all the family and friends up here so we can get it done here. Hang on a minute, so just to sit there with us.
They don't stand next to you.
Yeah, if you. You're not, we're not.
No, no. We aren't, we're not.
We just want to be down here.
Lock me, hold me.
I get another picture.
All right, now, wait.
Family and friends?
All the family and friends, come on up.
You'll have to lay down in front.
Come on. Anybody?
I'm a wife, does that count?
Okay, come on. That counts. Anybody else?
Absolutely.
Full Sewer Department, come on up. Come on. I thought you were going to escape.
You guys are going to have to take a knee.
Come on, get in here, I got them.
You guys want all of us?
Anybody else?
It's a good picture.
All right, let's sneak back here again.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This whole crowd is just there.
We're missing them.
Yeah, they were going to call back.
These bad guys.
Yeah.
She lost.
I'm very sorry.
He saved us.
I have a little regret.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This whole crowd is just there.
We're missing them.
Yeah, they were going to call back.
These bad guys.
Yeah.
I ask, once again, anybody want anything pulled from consent agenda for individual discussion? Anybody? I don't see any. Motion's in order to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carried. Okay. Let's now move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. We'll take up item number thirteen. This is a possible action on a memorandum of understanding between Carson City, between Carson City, the Carson City Sheriff's Office, and the First Judicial District Court, and the Carson City Justice and Municipal Courts for the implementation of a pretrial risk assessment program. Who's doing all this? Ben, you going to take us off, or is that what you're going to do, or who's going to start? Max?
Max, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good morning, Max Cortez, Court Administrator.
Good morning.
We're before you today to ask you to approve the memorandum of understanding between the courts, the city, and the sheriff's office. On March 21st, 2019, the Supreme Court disseminated a court order mandating that all Nevada courts implement a new pretrial risk assessment tool. This tool is to determine if an individual, at the time of arrest, is a risk to the community. If they are not a risk to the community, they are supposed to be released as soon as possible. This is an overhaul of how we have conducted court across the state. It's an overhaul of how courts have operated. Traditionally, I don't know if any of you have been ever arrested, hopefully not, but traditionally, when some... Okay. Traditionally, if someone's arrested, they're placed into the jail. Depending on their offense, bail is set, and then they make phone calls, or they can bail themselves out through a credit card or debit card. At some point, there is a hearing, and a motion can be made by an attorney, whether or not to reduce the bail to the judge. The judge can make that determination. The DA can also motion to increase the bail, or the judge can find that the defendant can be released on his promise to appear on recognizance. That's tradition. That's how we conducted court for years and years before I was born. So, once we got the order, meetings were held with the Sheriff's Department, the Alternative Sentencing Department, Chief Fletcher, also with the DA's office, and Jason Woodbury. And it was really discussed about how are we going to implement this tool effectively? It's an unfunded mandate. We don't want unfunded mandates, but here we are. How do we do this? I was directed at one, after one of those meetings, to contact the State Court Administrator, Robin Sweet, to ask them, does the court have to do this? Do we have to hire a bunch of people? Can we enter into an agreement with a law enforcement agency? Can they do it? It's a court order for the court to do it, but, you know, can we delegate these responsibilities? Can they administer the tool? On March 22nd, we received a response, and it said, yes, you can enter into an agreement. However, they did recommend and suggest that training be part of the agreement, and that the court be involved with how that system is going to be implemented, the processes, the decisions that are going to have to be made. So this is not a one-size-fits-all. Right now, courts across the state are trying to determine, you know, are they going to do it in-house? Are they going to work with a local law enforcement agency? I can relay, I believe Judge Wilson's still here, that the judges have full confidence in the sheriff's office to do this, but they do need to be part of that implementation plan. It was first thought that alternative sentencing, and I know Chief Fletcher made a presentation to the board in March, I think it was the day of the order that came out, to the board. So it was first thought that they would do the pretrial assessment tool, because they do pretrial supervision. So we thought, well, that's probably a good fit. But after we met, the judges met and round tabled and discussed, it was determined that the sheriff's office would be better suited, mainly because everybody is brought into the jail, they're booked, we currently have a process in place where, under existing law, the judges have two months, under the law, within forty-eight hours, review the circumstances when somebody's arrested, determine if there's probable cause. That has to be done. If that individual is in jail, doesn't make bail, nobody answers the phone, they don't have a credit card, debit card, they go to a seventy-two-hour hearing. And so that is all existing law right now. That's what we're doing. So we thought we could use that same process during that time to determine when the assessment tool would be administered. I cannot stress this enough. This is unventured ground. This is totally different than what we've ever done before. If you look at the tool, it's a one-page, looks like a very simple thing to do, but the court and the sheriff's office, we have mandates that we have to follow. If somebody is accused of a domestic violence charge, they have a mandatory twelve-hour hold. We have to figure out, okay, when is the assessment supposed to be done? If the person comes in and they're under the influence, and they're not sober, when do you do that tool? And then, on top of that, additionally, the judges can override it for certain circumstances, for good cause. Maybe they know this individual before, maybe the circumstances of the offense. So that is another thing that we need to work on. We need to make sure that it's done correctly, efficiently, and, again, this is something totally different. I also want to talk about non-English speakers, people who need interpreters. So that one-page form, that twenty-minute, thirty-minute process is probably going to take longer for that population. So we're here before you today with the MOU. A lot of thought went into it, and I know there's a second presentation on the number of people we think we're going to need. Again, this is unventured ground. This is the best proposed plan, thinking about unfunded mandates. The sheriff says that this year, we can get started. He can basically absorb the cost in his budget, which is a gift. We may need more resources. We may need less resource. We just don't know. But we want to get started. We need to get started. We need to have the resources to do that, and we're here today to present that to you.
We understand pretty well up here what happens when someone with higher authority requires you to do something, and it doesn't always come with money. You frequently, actually, it always comes without money. So we're aware that what the Supreme Court has said in its administrative docket, and, you know, that the compliance of the district courts and the other courts are required to do that, I think, you know, so... I don't know where the board's going to go on this, but we're well aware that this has to be implemented somehow. So, Board, we want to... Any questions here?
I did.
Anybody? Any public comments on it? Okay. Anybody?
Ben's going to take care of my question.
Ben?
Mr. Mayor, Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney. For the record, just before you go into discussion, there were a couple proposed revisions to the memorandum as you have presented. If I could present those now?
Present them.
If you go to page two, and I'm looking at the two in the middle of the page, subsection four A, the last sentence on that page, we're going to add the word "and" after Carson City, and then strike the sentence. The new position will have a total starting salary and benefits range all the way through to the second "and" on the top of page three. And then, strike the last sentence in that paragraph. So the new paragraph will read, "The pretrial risk assessment program in Carson City will be created through a separate action by the Board of Supervisors." So, basically, it just takes out the salary range, because that can change in the future, and so we didn't want the board's hands tied by something that we're putting into the memorandum now, since new positions will have to come before you for approval anyway. So that was the reason for that change. In subsection B, inadvertently omitted the "city" as a party, so the first sentence will read, "The city, courts, and the CCSO." And then, in subsection C, after the "city," we're going to add a comma, and then it'll say, "Upon approval by the Board of Supervisors, will agree to allocate the necessary budget funding."
So everybody's taken care of in their own area, then?
Correct.
All right. I got you. Pretty good. Any comments? Stacy, did you have a question?
Max, if I recall, the Supreme Court is saying this doesn't need to take effect until next year. If I'm not mistaken, it's October of next year, or... Well, I may be wrong about the date, but it's next fiscal year. So can you explain why we're hiring one of these positions in a current fiscal year, and why it's necessary to bring them on at this point through the remainder of this fiscal year?
Do you want to take? Yes. Okay.
Thank you, sir. This is Jerome Touchpan, Assistant Sheriff. So, yeah, there's a few very important dates. The order came out in March of this year. The order gave some strong ability for the locals to administer the program how they felt it was necessary. For example, Washoe, White Pine, and Douglas all do it a little bit differently. In May of this year, we got some feedback that it could be administered other than court employees. So we started getting all the people involved, and at the end of that conversation, we decided, yes, this does need to happen. It's mandated, and the most cost-effective way to do it would be to have existing Sheriff's Department infrastructure, and then hiring new people. So we have one person already in the position that can start doing this. We have figured that to get a 24/7 operation, you need to have six positions. And as we started looking at it, we decided, between the hours of about midnight and six in the morning, the people who come in that need to be processed probably won't need to, will need to sober up, will have some intoxication issues, or if there is a wait, it'll be just a matter of hours. The overall goal of this is to completely minimize the amount of time the person spends in jail. We found that the longer that they spend, even a day or two, can substantially change their lives. And I've got some statistics. If we talk about this in number fourteen, I'll get into a little bit more details. So, directly to answer your question, the Supreme Court said between September of this year and December of this year, they were going to start and end the training period. Now, it's come to our attention that the training might be pretty brief. However, I will tell you that this has been several years in the making. They have three volumes of paperwork that justify this program, about six hundred pages. There's a lot of things beyond just this form that we're going to have to train people on. If you could allow me, I've created a list of some of the things that this new employee is going to have to learn how to do. And I'm going to add to you why we start now or soon, is because, well, this is new, and we don't know how a lot of this stuff is going to work out, and we're going to have to make some mistakes as we go through the process. They're going to have to learn the Tiburon computer process, as well as all the codes that are there for both the law enforcement side and the court side, because all that data needs to go into the form that we're going to be doing. They're going to have to review court orders, alternative sentencing records, FTAs, and existing warrants in other jurisdictions. They might even have to look into juvenile records. We're going to have to train them on looking at multi-state criminal records to include their interpretation. And if you've ever seen those, Nevada has some complexities to it, but you start going to other states with different codes. Takes a lot of research to be doing that. And also, they're going to have to learn the booking and release process, because if we do it wrong, that's going to be a lot of liability to the city. So, as we start to do all these things, we are estimating it's going to take about three to four months, if you approve the position today, to actually get a boot on the ground and start learning it. Then we have to get them to become masters at this job, two of them, so that way we can get to the next phase of when we come to you during the normal budget cycle and ask for two additionals for starting July 1st. So that way, we will have, in fact, four people that can overlap and keep this program going. The goal, again, is to get someone out as quickly as possible, and if we don't have enough people, they'll end up staying there for a lot longer.
Okay. Thank you.
And because the sheriff isn't here, I decided to talk longer.
You've done well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brad?
So Jerome, what I didn't hear you answer was Stacy's question about the implementation date.
So, the court has required us to be implemented by September of 2020. We do suspect that by getting things going in early 2020 and having staff trained up, we will probably be able to deploy and have all the bugs worked out and be in service by that date and stay in compliance with the court order.
So, one of the things that I'm maybe a little confused on is, I understand that the training tool is available beginning next month, and that training needs to happen between September and December, but yet, we don't know the total number of positions that we will need, and the hiring is ongoing, meaning some positions now, some positions next fiscal year, some positions the fiscal year after that. So I don't understand the correlation between a requirement that training be done in the next ninety days, when we're not even going to hire people for two more years.
Well, go ahead, sir.
So, can you walk us through, what's the correlation between those two actions?
Well, you know, I don't want to be speaking for the court and how they wrote the order in September, and how the administrative court has decided to implement it. When I read the order, I was in the impression this would be a several-day, if not one-week training, where we'd be completely immersing them, and perhaps the AOC has decided that they can go at a higher level, provide just the basics, and then push back the more intense how-to and how-to apply it back to the local agencies. Which makes sense, because when you look at the order that the Supreme Court wrote, they said, you're going to be doing this, but how you actually implement it is up to the local authorities. And I think the, again, not speaking for the court, but just interpreting what I can, I think they're trying to say, we're going to give you the basic tool, and we're going to do it between September and December. Now, you, as an agency, needs to decide how you want to implement that.
So would it be fair to say that if we had one position, which we currently do, and they go through the training between September and December, that we've complied with the intent of the order, and then, as we bring on other positions down the road, that they will go through the training after they're hired?
Be risky. If we have one person, and they already have their own duties currently, and they're not able to start implementing the infrastructure, and as I went through this list, the things like the Tiborons, the NCICs, the access to interpreting things, these are several days, if not weeks, of training altogether. Then we have to figure out how we do something we've never done, as simple as, how do we do this report and get it to the court in a timely manner, so that way they can either review or override what our decisions are. I think two people is what it's going to take, and if we do have any turnover and that one person leaves, then we're going to be quite a ways behind. We also are going to be looking at, these two people are going to be training the trainers. If one's on vacation, if one's on leave, if one becomes injured, we may not make that very important deadline, and we'll have to explain ourselves to the court.
I guess what, you know, I'm not speaking for Brad, but I think what we're struggling with a little bit is bringing them on, is the timing of bringing them on. And it, I mean, I understand the courts are saying that they have to attend that training sometime in between September and October, but then you've got, you know, almost nine months before implementation happens after that. And I understand that staggering, and I guess what we're struggling with is bringing them on September 1, and then sending them to a week's worth of training, and then, we have one or two people who now are hired for a function, but they're really not going to be doing that function. And even if you allot for three or four months of training, that still leaves six months sort of wondering, what are we doing with these positions? And I think, as I'm certainly not speaking for anybody, everybody, but that's kind of what I'm struggling with.
I think we all want to hear the answer to that.
So, if you approved it today, and we started the recruitment today, and we went forward, it's going to be three to four months before we actually get a body in place. So, this second body that we're asking for today, we probably won't see, even if we expedite it, December, January. And that's just the nature of hiring in the law enforcement range. in September and how the administrative, uh, court has decided to implement it. Uh, when I read the order, I was in the impression this would be a several day, if not one week, training where we'd be completely immersing them. And perhaps the AOC has decided that, uh, they can go at a higher level, uh, provide just the basics and then push back the more intense how to and how to apply it back to the local agencies. Which makes sense, because when you look at the order that the Supreme Court wrote, they said, you're gonna be doing this, but how you actually implement it is up to the local authorities. And I think the, uh, again, not speaking for the court, but just interpreting what I can, I think they're trying to say, we're gonna give you the basic tool and we're gonna do it between September and December. Now you, as an agency, needs to decide how you want to implement that.
So would it be fair to say that if we had one position, which we currently do, and they go through the training between September and December, that we've complied with the intent of the order? And then as we bring on other positions down the road, that they will go through the training after they're hired?
Uh, be risky. Uh, if we have one person and they already have their own duties currently, and they're not able to start implementing the infrastructure. And as I went through this list, um, the things like the Tiburon's, the, uh, NCICs, the access to interpreting things, these are several days, if not weeks, of training altogether. Then we have to figure out how we do something we've never done, as simple as, how do we do this report and get it to the court in a timely manner, so that way they can either review or override what our decisions are. I, I think two people is what it's gonna take, and if we do have any turnover and that one person leaves, then we're gonna be quite a ways behind. We also are gonna be looking at, uh, these two people going to be training the trainers. Uh, if one's on vacation, if one's on leave, if one becomes injured, uh, we may not make that very important deadline and we'll have to explain ourselves to the court.
I guess what, uh, you know, I'm not speaking for Brad, but I think what we're struggling with a little bit is bringing them on, is the timing of bringing them on. And it, it, I, I mean, I understand the courts are saying that, that they have to attend that training sometime in between September and October. But then you've got, you know, almost nine months before implementation happens after that. And, and I understand that staggering, and I guess what we're struggling with is bringing them on September 1, and then sending them to a week's worth of training, and then we have one or two people who now are hired for a function, but they're really not gonna be doing that function. Um, and even if you allot for three or four months of training, um, that still leaves six months sort of wondering what are we doing with these positions? And I think, I, as I'm certainly not speaking for anybody, everybody, but that's kind of what I'm struggling with.
I think we all wanna hear the answer to that.
So if you approved it today, and we started the recruitment today, and we went forward, it's gonna be three to four months before we actually get a body in place. So this second body that we're asking for today, we probably won't see, even if we expedite it, uh, December, January. And that's just the, the nature of, of hiring in the law enforcement range. Then we have to start doing, and yeah, maybe we'll have a three or four month training period, so let's say three or four months. But then we have the, uh, infrastructure issues of, uh, going to the judges, and we're meeting with them monthly, and we're gonna be starting this, uh, probably testing as early as about March of next year, um, seeing if the system works and tweaking the system. Then the people, so that, let's say that gives us three months of testing. In July of next year, if we do hire actually on July 1st, and we have two more additional people, the people who had just done all the testing have become our subject matter experts, now have to teach these other two three months, which gets us right to the deadline.
I saw a lot more questions.
Oh, he wasn't.
He's got more than John.
So, um, so again, I just heard you say that the second position, if approved, may not be hired until December and January, but I also heard you say that the training requirement is September to December. So there's a disconnect there that I'd like you to address. And then my other question is, is the implementation date of September 2020, is that a hard date? Or do we have the ability to implement the program earlier than September? So in other words, can we roll right in? If we did approve it today, you hire the body, say in, in December, you start training in January, and that takes three months, now we're into April, can you start implementation at that point?
Yeah, uh, these are great questions. So a couple of days ago, when I thought it was gonna be a hard date by the Supreme Court, uh, between September and December, I would've had to sit here and represent that we had to get someone in place for that training. Now that I'm learning that it's a one-hour online course, it gives us a lot of more flexibility that we can begin that training when the person actually gets here. So it relieves some of the pressure that we had to get this person onboard immediately. Uh, I think, uh, December, January hire date is a very reasonable one, and I think it's attainable, and we can go through a good, decent background to get that person hired. So to move on to the other one, of course, we can start this early. One of the things that I would, uh, be talking to the court about is, is the unequal treatment. So if we have only one shift going through this assessment and making these decisions, uh, that means if you get arrested after 5:00 a night or before 2:00 in the morning, you might not get that benefit. Now, um, it's up to the court whether or not they want us to start going that direction, or perhaps what we'll do is we'll start it and have a soft rollout, where although the decisions aren't made on scene, but the judges get to see all of our results. And yeah, that is a very important part of implementing this program. Um, so I will say, starting early, no problem, starting late, we'll have some explaining to do.
Uh, go ahead.
I think that in general, we're probably all agreeing, so I was trying to put in place in my mind, if we send the existing person through the one-hour training, we will have complied with the court order. And then if we started the, uh, new support specialist on January 1st, that would then give you the opportunity to give them the standard, 'cause I guess I was looking for, what is the training period for all of your, uh, support specialists? Is that a normal two-month, three-month training period to learn all those systems?
Well, and so we've never done this particular one before, so we don't know how much this is gonna add, but we are looking at about two months for the current person in the jail to go through the training. I'll tell you, he's pretty sharp and he accelerated very quickly. Um, but we have to be prepared for up to four months for someone who's maybe a little slow before we start talking about, uh, they're not responding to training. Um, I think that, uh, with the funding of this particular one, this topic is gonna be the priority over some other things that they're gonna be doing. Uh, so I think, uh, to answer your question, two to three months is what we're looking at, and up to four months for some employees.
Okay.
Um, if I may, I wanted to interject. Um, it is so critical that we have the positions. In my past life, I was working in California, and we had a courtroom in the jail. There were clerks that refused to work in the jail. So individuals may apply for a position, you put them in the jail, you put them around people that they're not maybe accustomed to being with, and they may not like it. So we need to have at least a cushion there to hire somebody, and then they change their mind and say, uh, this is more than I signed up for. So I, I just caution that, yes, it's, it's money, it's a salary position, but if we cut too close, and we've got all these programs that they have to learn, and then they change their mind, then we're back three, four months trying to hire another person and going all over it again. So I, I just wanna interject that, because working in the jail, it's, it's, it's not very fancy, and we need to find the right people that want to do this job.
I, I completely understanding, understand that coming as a deputy director from corrections, but we, we still have to ascertain what the right answer is. And if I looked at January and said the person failed probation, I guess that's kinda what you say, whoop, that's not working out, and you had to go to the next person. I think we're still leaving ourselves time for implementation to a second, 'cause let's say they don't work out in January or February, you're probably gonna know in that first two months that, or they will, I don't like this particular environment and don't wanna do it. Um, so I'm trying to just put in my mind, I need a second bite at the apple, can I get it done and still have implementation for you? 'Cause it's really hard for us to do positions and things off budget cycle and make everything fit, and I realize you guys are in a pickle, you got a court order that said you get to do something and they don't care about our cycles. So I, I'm just looking to see if January would be acceptable, and that we could still, 'cause you will have one body that you're already gonna start now, and then you'd add the second body, and then maybe in July, we have to add four bodies.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
We'll talk about that when it gets a little closer, but, uh, no, I think if, uh, the board is amenable to January 1st, we can make this happen.
Thank you.
All right, John, and then Dr. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, as a former member of a state parole board in another state, I understand your concern about people who aren't comfortable in a jail or behind bars when they're functioning in, in, uh, whatever capacity it is, but not inmates. Uh, but, um, my question is, would you go back, man, to the, uh, to the last, um, change and read the, the new language again and show me what page it's on? I didn't keep up with you on that.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. Uh, if you're looking on page three, um, and I'm looking at the number in the middle of the page, um, the last change I said was under subsection C.
I'm sorry, what, oh, okay.
Um, subsection C, so it'll now read the city, comma, upon approval by the Board of Directors, comma, will allocate the necessary budgetary, budgetary funding.
Board of Directors?
Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Uh, in other words, this memorandum of understanding tells us what we have to do?
Um, well, I mean, that's why I put the language upon the approval of the board.
No, as we tell ourselves what we have to do, but it's in the language.
Sure.
And that goes back to the Supreme Court.
Correct, the mandate from the Supreme Court.
Just wanted to emphasize that, it's a little bit ridiculous, but all unfunded mandates are.
Okay, Brad.
Um, can we go back to, like, some clarification on the number of anticipated positions? Because the information that we have here indicates four positions, the existing position, the new position that's being requested today, and then another two positions for fiscal year 2021. But I heard a comment earlier that, um, it's anticipated to have six positions. So is that correct? And if so, when would those, the requests for those fifth and sixth positions take place? Would that be in fiscal year 21, 22, or could that be in fiscal year 2021?
My apologies if I wasn't clear. So when we look at staffing a position full-time, uh, we need six people to keep doing that for, uh, vacation coverage overlap, that's for a 24/7 operation. We, uh, examined this and we decided that we don't need someone, uh, full-time, we need a two-thirds 24/7, which would be four people. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Other comments of the board? All right, public comment on this? Anybody? Ben, you okay?
All right, all right, board. Uh, let's discuss, what do you wanna do? I mean, I think what we've seen here is that, uh, you know, it looks to me like, and just talking out loud here, that, you know, the changes that have been proposed by the deputy DA look like they work. Uh, the question's gonna be whether or not we wanna put this off till, or put off, uh, the hiring one, and I think that's, uh, till January 1 or January, um, but whatever you wanted. Go.
I think they're, they're two separate items, so let, let's deal with the 13A, right? We'll go with the MOU.
Yeah.
So I move to approve the MOU as amended on the record by the deputy DA.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried, okay. Uh, one nay, excuse me. 401, okay. Uh, let's go to, um, the next item. This is the, uh, additional position, this is 13B, for those listening up at home. Uh, this is discussion and possible action regarding the creation of a new full-time support specialist, A3, in the Carson City Sheriff's Office. We've been discussing that under the immediately preceding agenda item. I think we have a pretty good idea of what we might wanna do there. Any additional comments under this agenda item? You wanna add anything?
Available for additional questions.
Okay. Wanna take a trial motion, somebody?
Yep.
No?
I move to approve the creation of a full-time CCSO support specialist position to begin in early January 2020, meaning that recruiting for that position could take place in the fourth quarter of 2019, but the position would be hired in January 2020.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. John Barrett, supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. I voted against the, um, memorandum of understanding, and I will be voting against this. It goes outside of our budget, and it, uh, tells us, uh, um, this tells us that the Supreme Court, uh, doesn't, uh, do what I've said over and over again about government. The government, uh, takes actions either too slowly or too quickly. And this has been shoved down our throats, and I'm just gonna vote no, because I want them to know, although they probably won't pay any attention, that we're getting very tired of this from higher up bodies. The people at the federal government, the people at the state government, and the people who tell us what to do are no smarter than we are and no dumber than we are. So I'm just gonna vote no as a protest.
Go. Discussion's in order.
So just on discussion on the motion, just saying the word January, did you mean it's, the position is effective January 1, so they could put the body in? I, I think giving January is kinda like 31 days. Well, I know, but for position sakes, do we just wanna say it's effective January 5?
What I didn't want to get into was a specific date that then may or may not be able to be complied with, with the first day of the month being a holiday. So I think that the position could be hired from January 1st through January 31st, it just depends on the sheriff's office and if you've recruited, uh, adequate, uh, applications. I mean, I, I don't know that we're in the position to dictate that, so I, I would leave my motion the way it is.
I, I think you give an effective date, and then they can hire it anytime after that date. So if you say it's effective January 1st, then anytime after January 1st, they can fill it. That's what I was trying to get to, and they'll pick the date that they interview and do all that, but you make the position effective on a date for the personnel people to have a position in the system.
What's your preference, Jerome?
Sir, if we just say January 1st, we'll make it happen close to January 1st.
Then I would amend my motion so that the effective date is January 1st, 2020.
Thank you, sir.
The second agrees? Okay. All right, there hasn't been an amendment to the motion, the second, the second agrees, don't need to vote on that one, um, on the amendment, we'll vote on the amended document here.
Just give me a discussion.
Let me also say on discussion, I know that the NACO board, uh, and as well as I did, made, uh, an overture to the court that, you know, these things, speaking to what supervisor Barrett was talking about, this looks like an awfully meritorious program in terms of administration of justice in our state. But, you know, it's time, sometime that people stand up and say, yeah, it's a good thing to do, but bring some money with it, rather than just shove stuff around. I mean, it makes, uh, so, um, you know, the, the point was made there, didn't go very far, which usually doesn't, uh, because we're the last, we're the last rung on the ladder here, and, and as everybody knows, it all goes downhill. But the other side of that is, is that we're the ones who administer justice in our community, and we're the ones who do these things. It's not the Supreme Court, it's not the legislature when it comes from unfunded, it's Carson City folks do it. And so, you know, uh, in, in one sense, it's, it's hard to accept these things that get pushed down on us, but in another sense, I'm very proud of our community being able to deal with things to make life better for all of us here. So on the motion, further discussion?
I do.
Discussion.
I just wanna say, normally, um, I don't approve positions coming outside of the budget cycle. And so I want to explain on this one, however, I think that we did hear presentations, um, during the budget cycle. So for me, I was prepared for this to be coming down the pike, and so it wasn't a surprise position being added off budget cycle. So I just wanna explain that I will vote for this, even though normally I'm a, I'm a no for positions outside of a budget cycle unless there's some new grant. And since we didn't get any money, uh, this would be outside the norm, but since I think staff has adequately been preparing us for this.
Further discussion, I don't know if it's John or Brad, but.
Yeah, just, um, piggybacking on Lori's comments, um, we were told that there should be sufficient savings within the sheriff's office budget to cover this position for this fiscal year, so hopefully there's no fiscal impact.
John.
Yeah, I agree with all of you, especially at the, as the mayor said, this is, this is, my vote against this is not, because I don't think it's a good idea. It's timing. Uh, we're seeing at the federal level, people taking actions that timing-wise are gumming up the works a great deal, and I suppose some of my frustration emanates all the way to that level. Timing is everything in government. Government either works too fast or too slow, and we've been told to do something too quickly. I agree, though, with Brad. Um, in terms of the money part of the issue, it comes down here, uh, to the fact that we won't have an impact until, uh, early next year. I think these things need lots of lead time, because other people are asking our taxpayers, uh, whether it's this year or next, to pick something up that wasn't in our budget and wasn't planned for. And I'm getting really tired of it. I've been tired of it for 50 years. It just never ends. So I hope somebody's listening.
I'm just gonna say, you know, John, you and I are getting older, and I don't think this is gonna change.
I'm afraid you're right.
I'm not gonna change. Uh, on the motion as amended, is there a public comment on that? Anybody wanna, I don't think there, okay. On the motion, further discussion? Okay, on the motion as amended, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Nay.
Okay, 401 passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge Wilson, for being there. Uh, and I know Judge Wilson was behind a lot of the judicial reform that happened his last time, good stuff. So, um, Judge, thanks for taking the leading oar on, on, uh, making sure that the administration of justice in our state, not just for the pre-trial assessment, but other things that were going on in our state. So, very good, all right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, let's now take up, uh, purchasing, item 14, purchasing and contracts. Uh, this is for, uh, we have two related to Dr. Joe. Let's try and take both of them up at the same time if we can. So we'll combine 14, for discussion, we'll combine 14A and 14B, uh, and go from there, okay? All right. We're on 14, um, A and B.
Yes. Good morning, Carol Lakers, purchasing and contracts. Uh, this is for the discussion and possible action regarding contract number 19300012 with Sierra Psychological Associates LLC, um, with Dr. Joseph McElstream, um, as mental health consultant for the Carson City Jail. This is an annual amount of $84,272, um, with annual instruct, in extension options through June 30th of 2022. Uh, so the total contract would be for 200 of 2022. So the total contract would be for $252,816 to be funded from the sheriff's office professional services.
I think we all know about Dr. Joe.
Dr. Joe, yes.
Is there a discussion on this item? Anybody want a further discussion on it? Public comment? Okay, then if we can, we'll try this, see if we can try a motion to approve, because we know where we are.
I got it. I move to approve contract number 19300012 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Okay, let's take up, can we do a similar motion on 14 Bravo?
Yeah, watch this.
All right.
I move to approve contract number 19300013 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, public comment, anybody? I don't see any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well done, Stacy.
Sorry, it's still cracking.
That's good. You know, Judge Russell has a, Judge Russell has a saying, you know, when he's running a meeting, moving right along, moving right along, you know. Okay. All right. Keep it going. Let's now take up, thank you. Hey, Doc Joe, on behalf of all of us here, thanks for everything you do at the jail. I mean, we gave short shrift to the contracts, but don't, please don't misunderstand that for our appreciation for what you do. It's very important. So thanks again. Okay? All right. All right, let's take up item 14, Charlie. This is discussion and possible action regarding various personal, various components of hardware and software through the joiner contracts. Who's doing this? Oh, good. Okay, Carol, you want to tell us the top line, then we'll have Eric talk to us.
Yep, this is just the discussion and possible action for the annual spend for various components of hardware and software through the joiner contracts that are listed. This is for a not, a total amount not to exceed $750,000 for this fiscal year.
Eric, you want to tell us?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Eric Von Schimmelmann, chief information officer for the city. This is the annual contract I bring to you every year with our estimated expenditures for hardware and software throughout the city. We just bring the joiner contracts so that we can do this all at once, to get those in place, so I can start ordering computers and any servers, anything that I need to order. Any contract outside of this, I'll bring to you individually if it warrants coming to the board for any other vendors.
All right. Comments? Discussion with this panel? Public comment? We okay on this one? Supervisor Bankowski, you want to try it?
Yep. Carol, what's your official position?
Purchasing and contracts administrator.
Okay. All right. I move to approve the purchase of hardware and software through the joiner contracts in our packet until the expiration date of each joiner contract, and authorize the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the joiner contracts as long as the general terms and conditions of those underlying contracts do not change.
Good motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Let's now take up item 14, Charlie. This is discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of various component, wait a second. Delta, excuse me. Discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of 15 vehicles for several departments throughout the city utilizing the state Nevada's competitive bid list and cooperative purchasing agreements through Sourcewell for a total not to exceed $1,040,205.36. Carol, I gave you the top line there, but tell us where we are. Okay. Lucia, how are you doing?
Mr. Mayor, good morning.
You going to come up and talk about this?
I wouldn't miss it.
All right, go ahead.
Lucia Maloney, transportation manager. Thanks for allowing me to come up. I wanted to introduce you all in the public to our newest fleet foreman, Rich Hardcastle. When Rich is not at work, I'm told he participates in the Silver State Highlanders group, where they do things like wear kilts and throw heavy things around. There's a big event coming up on September 14. So now that you know Rich non-professionally, I will say, he's been with the city for 12 years. The last several years, he's served as fleet foreman. We were thrilled to promote internally from within. We have a lot of great people here at the city and in fleet. So you'll start seeing Rich now. Is that good? His last day is today, so if you see him around, make sure you say thank you. We won't miss him, and he has left some big shoes, but Rich is fully prepared, and I'm thrilled to have him here. So with that, he is a tough guy. He throws heavy things, so you can ask the tough questions today, and he'll be prepared to answer them.
Maybe we should just deny it and see how he reacts to that. All right. Public comment, anybody? Rich, welcome aboard, and say welcome aboard, welcome to the new position.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, all of you, and looking forward to doing it, working with you in the future.
Very good. Brad?
Yeah, just for the record, this item includes nine vehicles, replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. They lost a vehicle in an accident recently, and that car has been authorized for replacement. And so my understanding is that we will look at that in the fiscal year 2021 budget and reduce the number of vehicles, replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office at that time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
That's a good answer. You know what? All right. All right. Public comment, anybody? John, comment, go.
Well, thank you for your good answer to the brief answer. I appreciate it, too. Am I correct in my math, 69,000 per vehicle? Tell me, that's an average. Why is it that high? Of course, I'm so old that I'm used to paying less for vehicles.
I hear you. The average is that high because we have on this order a 966 Caterpillar landfill loader. So that, and we have a Parks skip loader to replace the one that had a catastrophic failure earlier this year.
I thought so. I thank you for that. I just wanted to get that on the record, that this isn't 69,000 per car.
No, no, sir.
Okay. Further discussion on this item? Public comment? Don't see any. Supervisor Barrett, what motion's in order?
I move to approve the purchases as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay. Thanks again, Rich. Lucia, good to see you again. You know, you got to come over here, stay, you know, I know you're over there at RTC place, but you know, come out here. Okay. All right. Let's take up, let's see where I am now. Okay, we're going to go to 14 Echo. This is discussion and possible action regarding a determination that the EFI Solutions is the lowest bidder pursuant to chapter 332 Nevada revised statutes and to award contract number 1920-032, the orange booster pump station for a total not to exceed $1,109,514.17. Okay? Very good. Dan, you want to add anything to the staff report?
Sure, I will. Good morning, board. Dan Stuckey, city engineer, for the record. Just wanted to, this is part of the East-West Transmission Project that was before you a couple board meetings ago. We chose to bid this out separately to avoid contractor markup, general contractor markup, which saved the city about $100,000 to $150,000 on this. The location of this booster station is going to be just north of Long Ranch Estates between Anderson Ranch and Longview Way in that open space area. There was one bid received, however, it's not abnormal, the specialty type product that this is, and we believe the, the cost is fair and within the range of our engineer's estimate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Got a couple lights up here. I don't know who's first. Brad, you want to go then, Stacy?
Sure. At this point, I'm going to jump on the John Barrett anti-government bandwagon and thank the legislature for the $78,367.17 in sales tax that we're now required to pay for nothing.
Out of one pocket into another one, I mean, you know.
State could get it.
That was going to be my comment.
Unfortunately, you know what, it's.
Think we all echo it.
So, and I talked to the city manager about this, and actually she sent me the bill. And so that's happened at the time I was at a government, but I'm shocked that NACO didn't try and counter that.
They were. They were hard, hard involved in that. As a matter of fact, so was I.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes you run up against a wall, and it's just not going to move. Because it, you know, as much as you say this doesn't make intuitive sense, because you're just taking money out of one pocket and putting it in another, they had a different approach to life, and it just didn't work. But it's not for, Stacy, I'd like to say that it's not for lack of trying. I think NACO did it. I don't know where the League of Cities was on that one, but they were, they were pretty grumpy about it.
But I do have another question. What's the status that requires a special use permit? And can you tell me what the status of that is? Because I've had a few inquiries from neighbors.
Yeah, no, good question. It does require a special use permit that was approved at planning mission, I believe, a couple months ago, the June planning commission, I believe. I do want to point out that there has been an additional investment to make this structure blend into the surrounding environment, including landscaping that surrounds it. So there is an investment there to make it fit in.
Okay. And there was no opposition at the special use permit hearing?
No opposition.
No, there was not. There was none. Okay. I guess they save that for me when I'm at the park. Thank you.
Yeah, go, John, sorry.
This is the same, this booster pump is going into the building that we approved a month or so ago. That's a different, that's a replacement well, correct?
Yeah, that was well number three. This is a new booster station as part of the East-West Transmission Project to deliver water up to Quill.
General area, though.
Yeah, close to the same location.
How close will it be to the, I don't think I saw a plan as to exactly, or maybe it was on the plan that you sent me. About how close will it, was it on that plan?
It wa, I believe it was on that plan, as far as how close to the Long Ranch Estates or?
Yeah, to the homes.
Yeah.
As I recall, when I spoke to you, it needs to be up on that, there's a sort of a bench there with an elevation. And it's my recollection that it has to go on that because that elevation is part of.
Yeah, there was a bunch of, yeah, so as far as to operate that system the most efficiently, that location needed to happen, and to avoid the addition of another water tank. So it was kind of in that area where it needed to happen. We have done, as far as, I know there are some concerns at the planning commissions, or at least what we received, I don't think it ever happened at the planning commission, but as far as noise, and I do want to comment that when the pump is running, it's equivalent to about like an air conditioning unit outside a home. So pretty reasonable sound.
Okay.
Brian Elder, Carson City, project manager. So from the property line, I believe it's, the closest it'll be is 30 feet, fluctuates between like 30 and 36 feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Other comments or questions from the board? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? All right. Ready for motion, supervisor Barrett?
I move to award the contract as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you very much. Okay. Board, let's see if we can take items 15. Let's see where we go, and we'll take, not, I'm thinking about when we should take a little five or 10 minute break here, but let's try, if anybody has to, wants to break, we'll do it real quick. Let's do 15A. Ken, come on up. Ken Moan. We'll take up 15 Alpha. This is discussion and possible action regarding submission of a draft airport master plan and airport land play out to the, to the FAA Phoenix District Office. We know a little bit about this, but go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and board, staff. I'm going to log in here real quick, and then I'll pull up the graphic that we had up in July, which shows the development concept plan. There, I think we should be able to get that full screen. There we go. As we discussed in July, I came to you with the draft master plan concept that had been just reviewed the day before by the Airport Authority Board. And the consultant presented, made the presentation to the board at that time, discussed the overall master plan development concept, and the board approved it to bring, I came to you for any, I think it was backwards, let me go, let me reverse that. Came to you first for comment, and then we held our, our board meeting on the 17th. The CCAA approved that concept, and so now what we want to do, since the city is the grantee or receiver of the grant, we want to send it to the airport district office in Phoenix for their approval of the forecast, which they've already done in the draft master plan process. But the other piece they need to approve is the airport layout plan. Now, this, this graphic that you see here is not the airport layout plan. I could put that up, but it looked a lot more like a plate of spaghetti and very hard to read, as it's full of draft lines and notations. But the, the long and the short of it is, this master plan is a 20-year period, and everything you see there in red represents new pavement, and everything you see in yellow is a representation of new structures. There are some, if you look at the bottom of the screen, there's some colored areas along the College Parkway, and that indicates red, again, pavement, and blue and yellow or green is either available for surface lot parking or, or land development. That inset graphic that you see there identified as future runway 27 approach lighting system is really the key structure of this, this draft master plan. So, but having discussed this at the previous board meeting, I don't want to belabor it, but I do want to open up for any questions. So what are asked today is for approval by the Board of Supervisors to submit this to the FAA for final approval. And they'll prove, like I say, the airport layout plan, and then they'll concur with our development concept, or they'll have feedback based on that.
And they'll have money.
Pardon me?
And they'll have money.
We've already, we've already got the money, and we spent it.
All right, Ken, all right. All right. Public comment on this, on the master plan? Anybody? Board, discussion?
Just, just want to say wonderful work on this, since I'm the airport authority representative from this board. It seems to me it's good work.
Yeah. Very good. Anybody else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion then.
I move to approve submission of the draft airport master plan and airport layout plan to the FAA Phoenix Airport District Office.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ken. And thanks to your board for, and thanks to you for getting the ball rolling on all this stuff. Good stuff.
I don't need to, I can't take credit for getting it rolling, but it was, it started before my actual hire date in March, but we did have quite a bit of input, especially on the airport, future airport lighting for the instrument approach. So that was probably our big, my biggest contribution to that.
All right. Thank you again. All right. Let's take up 16, Parks and Recreation. Who's going to do this one? Jennifer, haven't seen you for a while either. You've been over, what have you been doing, something with guns? Okay.
It's a source, I'm just. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm happy here, to be here today with members of the Clear Creek Bowman. They are the operators through an agreement for the Centennial Park Archery Range. They're a wonderful partner. They do so much for the community. The majority of the funds that they raise are donated back to other nonprofits in the region. They're just so philanthropic and community-minded, and we appreciate all that they do. This is a request from them. This has already gone to the Parks and Recreation Commission. You have a copy of their recommendation in your packet, and we just handed out a copy of a magazine that has some tremendous article on the individual that they want to talk about today, and just some brief background about that, that individual, and I'll turn it over to the Clear Creek Bowman about their request today.
Good morning. We don't see you here very often either, so it's pretty good. So take it off.
Good morning. Tom Howell, Jim Davis.
Hi, Jim.
We're Clear Creek Bowman. The gentleman we'd like to honor, Tim Miggs, was the founder of our club 40 years ago. Jim is a charter member of that club. Tim is a boyer of international and national repute. He has made or produced items for notables such as Howard Hill, Fred Bear. He has made or produced items for notables such as Howard Hill, Fred Bear, and numerous others. Along with that, he was a promoter of archery in the, in the community. And Jim would like to additional, add some additional information regarding his contributions to the Archery Hall of Fame.
Jim? Good morning.
Morning. Jim Davis with the Clear Creek Bowman. Again, like Tom said, Tim was in this area for 60 years and he built bows that, the whole time. He's pretty much known worldwide and he, his contribution to archery is, is known worldwide. And we would, we would like to get the archery range changed to the Carson City Tim Miggs Archery Range in his honor and for the contribution he made to archery, not just locally, but again worldwide. After Tim's death, we ended up with a lot of his possessions and he had correspondence with archers all, all over the United States from about the mid 1930s to, to currently. And, you know, we didn't know what to do with it. Couple of the guys went through it, picked out stuff and called the Archery Hall of Fame in Independence, Missouri. And they had a real interest in it. So all that material was sent to the Archery Hall of Fame and he was entered into the Archery Hall of Fame. And, and here he lived, chose to make Carson City his home and his business for the last 60 years. And we would like to honor him by changing the name of the archery range to the Carson City Tim Miggs Archery Range.
You're good people. Thanks. Good stuff. And I assume, Jennifer, that since everybody else has approved this on the way up the ladder here, that complies with our ordinance on, on naming.
Yes, it does. And a copy of the ordinance is in your packet.
Okay. Got it. All right. And, yeah, go ahead. Stacy, jump in.
I just have a quick comment. I just, I, I heard about Tim, the Clear Creek Bowman, as you guys probably know, used to meet in the fire station and many, many, many years ago. And I had an opportunity to meet him many years ago, quite a character and, you know, a great, a great Carson City citizen. And I love the quote, "You learn something new all the time. When you stop learning, you aren't worth a darn." That's a great quote. It's a great quote.
It is a great quote. Okay. Public comment on this? Anybody? All right. Board, we okay with this? Who wants to do it?
Me.
Okay. Supervisors back, well?
I move to rename the Centennial Park Archery Range the Tim Miggs Carson City Archery Range.
Second. There's a motion and a bunch of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried. Okay, let's take five, let's take 10 minutes and we'll come back, okay? We'll be in recess for 10 minutes. Thank you, guys.
Board of Supervisors, it's back to order. We're on item number, agenda item number 17, so we'll take up 17 Alpha. This is a discussion on possible action regarding the transfer of approximately 11,269 square feet of land containing portions of Water Tank Road from APN 00745184 from Sincon Homes Nevada Corporation to Carson City and to initiate a lot line adjustment. You want to take us up on that? Ms. Hicks, go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Rural Property Manager. Back in 1992, the tentative map for Long Ranch Estates Plan Unit Development was approved by the Board of Supervisors. And following that, there were subsequent final maps, including the map for Kings Meadow at Long Ranch Phase Two, which recorded in October of 97. Through that map, there was an offer of dedication for the entire parcel that's highlighted in blue on the map that I have up before you. However, the city never did accept that parcel. And we've done extensive research and we've determined that it wasn't, it was not accepted. When that came to our acknowledgement, we realized that a portion of Water Tank Road is located across, sorry about that. Portion of Water Tank Road is located across the portion of that parcel. There is an easement for the portion that I'm outlining here with the mouse on the screen. So we do have an easement to that portion of Water Tank Road. We own the parcel that is below that to the south, but there's one small area that comes right off of Kings Canyon Road that we don't have an easement for. So we reached out to Sincon Homes. They were amenable to quickly deed that portion of the parcel to us. So the item before you today is to, to consider accepting donation of that acreage and then authorizing the city engineer to initiate the lot line adjustment and sign the map for that, for that parcel.
Okay. Public comment on this issue? Board? How'd you find a little tiny piece like that?
You know, those things just fall into my lap.
Okay, very good.
When she's not looking.
Okay. We ready for motion? Supervisor Van Kows, go.
First, I'd like to say, you know, thank you to Stephanie because this is now like the sixth or seventh item like this that's come in front of us that's just a cleanup item that goes back decades. So it's nice to see that we're actually kind of cleaning up our act. Now, moving on to the motion, I move to accept the transfer of land as described on the record and authorize the city engineer to initiate and sign the lot line adjustment.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried, thank you very much. All right, let's take up the next one. This is 17 Bravo, discussion on possible action regarding elimination of the bike and pedestrian coordinator position with the creation of a new full-time transportation planner analyst position within the Public Works Department. Lucia, how are you again? And Mr. Schultz, how are you? Good color suit this morning.
Good morning.
You're doing all right?
Thank you very much.
In your comments, we've had comments from Muscle Powered folks, I think we've all got it. I want you to address those as we go along, okay? All right.
If I may, Mayor, Board of Supervisors, I just, I want to go on the record and say that the message was portrayed loud and clear to bring things like this forward as part of the budget. And I heard that, I got that, and here I am. So I just wanted to make a general comment for both 17 Bravo and 17 Echo that these two items, we felt at Public Works that they were due the time, off-budget, and I, I do everything I can to not do this off-budget cycle. So that discussion was heard loud and clear, and we really try not to. But in these two cases that we're presenting today, there's, the need required us to do it this way. So I just wanted to start with that and put that on the record, for what it's worth. Lucia.
Very good.
Thank you. So as directed, I'm back here in front of the Board of Supervisors. Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. I have received, as I'm sure you have, a public comment from our bicycle community regarding concern over the change today, considered before you. And let me tell you openly and publicly that changing this position was something that we have thought through very carefully, and I'll provide some information about how we got to this decision. To provide a little bit of background, the Safe Routes to School program with its current funding agreement was executed in 20, March of 2017. In April of 2017, the Board of Supervisors took action to transfer the public health educator position, previously located in the Health Department, over to a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position within Public Works. So in this grant cycle alone, this will be the, the second title change or the third position that has been housed under this grant. Over the past 18 months within Public Works, we've had two resignations in this position for vacancies totaling seven months. That's 40% of the time it's been vacant. We've recruited, we've interviewed, and we've recruited some more. We have not been able to find qualified applicants that can execute the job duties while also being, and this is important, aware of the realities of how local governments operate and how to get things done in today's climate with regard to transportation. The vacancies have not only stalled progress toward implementation of the Safe Routes to School program and the action plan that was approved by the Regional Transportation Commission in February of this year, but has caused city management to take, take pause and reflect on what are the goals of this program and what are we trying to achieve here. The existing job description was written for a specific employee who was in the Health Department and transferred to transportation based on their skillset and interests. We always say we don't craft positions for specific individuals, but for the job that we need to get done. The existing job description requires very, very specific tasks designed specifically for someone with a passion for teaching children how to ride bikes and creating healthy communities, for hosting special events relating to getting kids active and out there, relating to spending time outside and riding a bike. And all of these things are very important. That said, when the position was moved from Health to Public Works, there was an understanding that that position would necessarily evolve. Quite frankly, we don't teach physical education in Public Works, and we're not special event I also say that just as we're not a roads division, we're not a bicycle division. We're a multimodal transportation division implementing a complete streets policy approved by the board where we consider the safety and effectiveness of all of our transportation modes. So reflection of the goals and, goals and objectives of the program and the long-term function and role of the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position have led us to the termination that an evolution is necessary. This evolution will allow the position to better align with the transportation division and will provide it a career ladder where the next candidate has an opportunity to potentially eventually be promoted to a senior planner. In its current iteration, there's nowhere for the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator to go. There's no potential for a promotion, there's no job description and a, and a path forward. And I believe that that's hurt the morale of the past two candidates. The salary for the transportation planner analyst is slightly higher than the bike ped coordinator as shown in the staff report. However, the savings from the ongoing and recurring vacancies allow for that change to, to proceed as budgeted. Risk of exceeding the budgeted personnel category under the grant can be mitigated through careful monitoring of the part-time Safe Routes to School champions that support the program and are also housed within Public Works. Once hired, the transportation planner analyst will be assigned the responsibilities of the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Coordinator, just as the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator was assigned before, and they'll lead implementation of the program's action plans and of the school safety review studies that were approved by the Regional Transportation Commission last night. The evolution will not come at a detriment to the critical role that this employee serves for the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School program or bicycle and pedestrian planning across Carson City. All we're intending to do is to draw candidates with experience and qualifications and a technical background that can help us implement the goals that we've set here in Carson City. Quite frankly, should this not be approved today, I fear we may lose the grant funding and the program altogether. We have gone for months with a vacancy in this position, and we need, we need it filled not just today, but we need it filled yesterday. I would like to draw your attention to the job description briefly within the staff I won't belabor this, but if you look at the first bullet under the new job description, it says contributes to multimodal transportation systems planning. That includes bicycles, pedestrians, it could include transit in the future. So that, that helps fill that bicycle and pedestrian role. The second bullet, contributes to successful implementation of the MPO's performance-based planning activities. We're talking about performance measures related to safety and crashes, including those of the bicycle and pedestrian network. The third bullet, performs research, studies, administrative, and technical activities necessary to achieve planning of project or program objectives. This person will be assigned to Safe Routes to School program. They'll be meeting the department objectives. Fourth bullet, contributes to development of the long-range regional transportation plan updates. Previous iterations of this position, we've had bicycle and pedestrian enthusiasts and people that really know the network, but they aren't familiar with transportation planning. And because of that, to date, we've been unable to roll up those critical functions and goals into our regional transportation planning documents. By hiring a transportation planner, we can further achieve our goals of bicycle and pedestrian planning and get them integrated with the rest of the system. Further down the list, I'll also draw your attention to contributes to the development and implementation of the Unified Planning Work Program for the MPO. This includes public outreach, engagement with organizations such as the school district, the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. All of these things will continue to be implemented with, should this action be approved. All of that said, after much thought and careful consideration, and after receiving from approval from the Nevada Department of Transportation, that approval letter is contained within your packet, I do recommend approval as described within the staff summary. Before you make a motion, I would like to add the following for your consideration. First, I recognize that the sudden shift perhaps caught people off guard and there was some confusion regarding the intent behind this action and the impacts that would have toward bicycle and pedestrian activities. I want to confirm with you that we are not in any way weakening our division's commitment to the safe and viable bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. In light of public comment, I would request that you consider in your motion that in that first bullet of the, of the job description, we define multimodal to specifically include bicycle and pedestrian and other modes. Secondly, I did receive a comment from one of the board members requesting that before the position is posted, we update the reports to section to include reports to the transportation manager or the senior transportation planner. There is another transportation planner that exists in, in our division that reports to the senior transportation planner. However, due to the importance and critical function of this position and that it is specifically grant-funded and will be assigned to the Safe Routes program, I feel it important to report directly to me. So that's why we have put it in the org chart as shown in your packet. That concludes my prepared comments, but I am happy to answer any question or take any discussion.
It was well-delivered, okay? Public comment before we go to board comments. Public comment, anybody? Chaz? Mr. McQuarrie? I think I tried to leave a note on your desk yesterday when I was over talking to the landscape architects, so that was Tuesday, I think. They said you were out playing around.
I try and keep them on their toes. It's still my schedule. Thank you. Although I've been in the office an awful lot recently. We have all these bicycle path projects, including Three Miles for the City right now. I think, well, I know you received communications from Donna Inversen and Ann McQuarrie, both past presidents of Muscle Powered and, and actually the founder of Muscle Powered in one case. And for the record, my name's Chaz McQuarrie, member of Muscle Powered. So if they're not in the record, I would just like to put them in the record. I have them here. After talking to both Lucia and, and Darren, I understand the goal of this change. I don't have a problem with that. My only issue at this point is that the description for the position is, really is generic. And until, you know, the changes that Lucia just suggested to the position, there was no mentions of bicycles or pedestrians at all. And while the previous, well, the position description for the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, the previous position, did include a lot of specifics, many of those specifics are not just tailored to the original holder of that position in Public Works. They are standard functions for a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator and the overseer of the Safe Routes to School program. So I would like to see, and I don't think if you just send out this job advertisement with this description, you're not going to get the sort of person that you really want to get, who has experience in this type of program. So my suggestion, request to the board is you add more specifics rather than just adding, including bicycles and pedestrians to the first bullet in the job description. And then, when it comes to the questions for the applicants at the end, again, these are all generic transportation planning analyst questions. I think that might be the appropriate place to ask them their experience with bike ped programs, their experience with Safe Routes to School programs, and some of the specific functions that this position will perform because granted it, which now under Public Works and not under Health, however, a significant part of this program is outreach to schools, to other community organizations, partnerships with NDOT, partnerships with the Health. So that is my request to the board that the position description include more detailed requirements or at least selection criteria.
Recognition, recognition on, of the importance of bicycle and pedestrians. I got you.
Right. And some of the bullets from the previous position description, not all of them, but some key ones.
I would assume that the transportation manager probably does not have an objection to that. Or do you?
Just wait on discussion.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Chaz, let me ask you a question before you leave. Do you, do you have a feeling of why we can't fill the existing position?
I, I find it a little strange because, I mean, many communities have these positions. I mean, bigger communities may have more than one. So I really don't know. I couldn't really offer an opinion on that. Yeah, I, I, it just surprises me, that's what I'd, I'd say. I mean, I've been talking to Lucia and Darren, part of it may be the salary range, and going to the new position increases that, so that may help you. But it's only going to help you if you include criteria that pertain to that particular position in there. Otherwise, you're going to get applicants that may be well-qualified generally, but not well-qualified to run the Safe Routes to School program.
Okay. Any other public comment before we go to Lorraine? Come on up.
Come on in. I do have a question about that. Isn't it being advertised amongst the school districts? Maybe it is. But also Lucia mentioned that it's a grant-filled position. So what happens if they leave a job and go to this? How long is that grant good for? And, you know, that's really risking a lot for many people to take that risk. So that's my comment. And I think they need to be guaranteed some length of time that they're going to be in that, you know, position. And is this ongoing or can it be an ongoing slot?
Got it.
So, okay, thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, board, let's take it up for ourselves. Supervisor Barrett.
So I'm wondering, when you have some specific job duties that you're attempting to recruit for, often I have seen that you don't change our overall job descriptions because these are all within our class and comp schedules. But what I'm wondering, or I've seen in the past, and I think might cover what Muscle Power is looking for, is you often do what's called a supplemental questionnaire that goes out with the position that says, you know, please apply, here are your duties, but then here's a supplemental questionnaire that dives into, give me your specific bike examples. And so I, I really don't think we should be changing our class and comp schedules, but I do agree that maybe a supplemental questionnaire for this specific position so you elicit the right planner. And so I just throw that out as an option to kind of, we can get where we're trying to go without upsetting our entire class and comp schedule, yet we recognize we're looking for a specific planner type. Does that make sense, what I'm?
Absolutely. And I apologize that I was remiss to mention that earlier. I had talked with Mr. McQuarrie yesterday or the day before, I believe, on this item. And I did give him my word that we would include supplemental questions because this person will specifically be assigned to the Safe Routes to School program to ascertain their experience in that area under the supplemental questions. And it's also something I intend to discuss during the interview questions because it is so important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Barrett? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to the beginning and Darren's comments regarding coming, exhort tape for the budget or whatever I'm trying to say. I've already waxed rather non eloquently regarding the problem in government of being too fast or too slow. I'm curious, all of a sudden, we have to have this because apparently the grant might go away, although we don't know that. But where was it a year ago? Nobody was thinking of this or how'd that work? Because Lucia's comment earlier was that there's been a lot of thinking about this. Has it been schools, schools downed and out?
So the position has existed. The bicycle and pedestrian coordinator that was here when I started back in August of 2017, she resigned in spring of 2018. We recruited for several months and finally hired a gal out of Florida to come here. She was here for, I want to say, five months, and then she resigned as well. And since March, we've had the vacancy. We have recruited, we have interviewed, but to date, we have not found a qualified applicant.
I appreciate that answer, but I'm not sure it answers me. It's probably my fault because the question wasn't very good. I don't recall, but I do, I do recall that we brought it over from Health to Public Works at your request, as, as I recall. That was right?
Darren Schultz, for the record, yes, that's, that's correct. It was a joint effort between the Health Department and Public Works. Yes, that's correct.
And when was that? I think she mentioned it.
2018, 2017? 2017?
2017, yeah. So I go back to my original question. Why are we in a hurry now when we weren't in a hurry before?
Well, we didn't, Supervisor Barrett, we didn't, we didn't feel like we had a problem. We, the position was filled and we were, we were programming along. And it wasn't until that resignation and we struggled to find a replacement, which took a very long time. And ultimately, we hired somebody as far away as Florida to fill the position. And we, so then we breathed a sigh of relief. Okay, we've got this handled, we've got a, a plan forward. But when that one didn't work out either, it was very short-lived, that's when we really started discussing, what, what are we doing here? What are we trying to accomplish? And...
And when was that?
So that was in the, that would been in March of this year when we started having that discussion. But even though we were having that discussion, we were interviewing or, or advertising for candidates to fill the position. But as we couldn't get people to apply or to commit to it, that's when we determined that this isn't going to work. And it was right, it was concurrent with the budget cycle for 20. And I, I mean, we could have come here, but I, we just weren't sure of what that direction would be. And we further, this is grant-funded through NDOT, and so we've, we've been working with NDOT all along as to helping, making them a partner for what this looks like going forward.
So you hadn't gotten them on board yet?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, why will the grant go away, if it will? Or, or do you know that?
Part of the concern, and I don't want to speak for them, but part of the concern that I've heard from NDOT employees is the continued vacancies have slowed progress on what we said we would do in the original grant application to such a degree that we're in a position now where it's highly unlikely we'll even be able to spend all the grant funds that we have before they expire next September. And so, you know, if, if we don't achieve what we say we were going to achieve in the grant agreement, it becomes a dead, a delicate situation with our funding partners.
Thank you for those answers.
Stacy?
You know, it, it seems to me that, and like the rest of the board, we got comments and heard comments here today, but it, it seems to me, and I think I have a few comments here. It seems to me that if, if there's a bike and pedestrian plan in the grant and that plan was looked at by muscle-powered and bicycle and pedestrian advocates, then if this position is going to function in that role to accomplish those goals that were in fact accomplishing what we set out to accomplish, it's just that you're changing the title and you're removing some of the key components from the job description. So I, I have to disagree with Lori. I think that yes, we do have job descriptions, and I don't see any harm in incorporating some of the bike and pedestrian job description components in the components of a transportation analyst position, regardless of whether it's this position or five other positions we're hiring for transportation analysts. That's, that's just my point. So I think we could put some of those components that muscle-powered is advocating go in there. I, I, I don't know why we still can't call it a bike and pedestrian coordinator and up the requirements. I still don't understand that. Or bike and pedestrian analyst, or transportation analyst in charge of bicycle and pedestrians. It just, it seems we're playing with titles, but we're getting the work done. And if the concern of muscle-powered and some of the comments we heard is that it's a matter of phraseology in a job description for getting recognition by the lab, then it seems to me we could fix that. So, you know, I, I definitely would like to see some of the bike and ped key components brought into this job description if, if this goes forward the way it, it's designed to. And I, and I don't see the harm, I don't see the harm in doing that, even if we do it for this entire class.
Okay. Well, that's, yes, that's the thing. We would definitely want to do it for the entire class. That's the point, is, is so that they're all, they all have the same job description. So if we did it, yes, it would be for everybody.
And do you see a tremendous harm in doing that?
I'll defer to Lucia on that.
There's not a harm per se, and again, I apologize that this was seemingly sudden. When I went through the bullets in the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position, and you have them in your packet, serve as the initial point of contact regarding active transportation issues. So in the job description of transportation planner analyst, you are a So in the job description of transportation planner analyst, you are a point of contact for multimodal transportation issues. If someone has a question about bicycles, they'll be referred to this person. So although we could enumerate that into the job description, it is, I felt, encapsulated, rolled up into that multimodal description. And going down the list, you know, when I read that, you know, talking about analyzed bike-ped data, well, the new description has analyzed data generally. So if there are specific bullets, I agree with you, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to adding them. That was, that was just the rationale behind why I made the decision I did.
Yeah, and I'm not faulting your decision, I'm just saying now that we're hearing input, there's no reason that we can't reevaluate that position and say, and I'm certainly not advocating that everything in the bike-ped, you know, list of duties get incorporated. I'm not advocating that. But I can see the point that they make, as you look at the job description, it doesn't talk about bicycles or pedestrians. So even on the one side, if you're saying that, yes, they are going to accomplish those goals, you would not know that by looking at the job description. So I can understand the point that people are trying to make. And all I'm trying to say is that somewhere in there, I think it would be nice, as you pointed out, to emphasize that, you know, they will act as the bike and pedestrian coordinator and the Safe Roots to School Program coordinator, and maybe two or three other bullet points. And I just don't see the harm in doing that. It seems like it would solve the problem.
Brad?
Yeah, I agree with Stacy's comments, and part of the reason for that is that I think without those specific references in the job description, that it hurts the points that would be allocated as a bike-friendly city. So I think it accomplishes some other goals as well, and if we don't put that language in there, it's going to have a detrimental effect. And I think that, you know, we could leave it up to you to go through both job descriptions and try to pick out the pertinent ones from the bike-ped position to bring over. You know, it's going to add a few bullet points, that's all. So I don't necessarily see a downside to it. I don't think it changes the overall intent of the planner analyst position unless you have another opinion on that.
I do not have another opinion on that because I felt like these activities were already rolled up in the description, you know, and I would have to check with Human Resources. But my opinion is that it wouldn't necessarily add more responsibilities to the existing transportation planner. So I don't know that it would change the class or, from Supervisor Bagwell's comments.
No, I think we're just asking that it clarify, not add duties.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor? How does the traffic engineer play into this whole thing? So we approved a traffic engineer, which to me seems like that would actually benefit a bike and pedestrian program. In fact, I see it as a tremendous benefit to a bike and pedestrian program. And I guess what I'm wondering is how can we leverage that position and maybe its job description to accomplish some of those same things? So we don't have anyone on board yet, is that correct? And are we advertising?
We, I'm pleased to announce, we have advertised, interviewed, and I made an offer to a candidate this morning.
Cool. Congrats, looking forward to that position. So can you talk a little bit about that and how that, to me, in my mind, at least in my mind, I think that really enhances multimodal transportation, which obviously includes bike and pedestrian safety, because it's always one of the things that we look at when we're looking at new development or changes, even the South Carson Street that we're going to talk about.
I couldn't agree with you more, Supervisor. You know, and I, some of my words in my presentation were strategic. When I say we need to be effective as a team, and I'm trying to build that, so getting that planning experience in there, but also getting the engineering experience so we can really build these multimodal, complete streets, facilities that meet the needs of all of our residents. So that's the goal. The traffic engineer will work hand in hand with the planners, as well as Dan Stuckey's Engineering Division, and we hope to be really effective.
Okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to put that on the record because I think that, I think it's a very important position, and I'm excited that we're bringing it on. And I think it's particularly germane to this topic, so thank you.
John, Supervisor Barrett, then Supervisor Bagwell.
Yeah, I've gone through this twice or three times, and I did notice that Mr. McQuarrie left his communications. They weren't in the background, or maybe I didn't get it? I don't understand why.
Those were submitted to, I believe, the Board, yeah, after the agenda was published.
Okay, thank you.
Lori?
So I'm okay with, well, let me say it two different ways. I'm really not okay with just on the fly changing job descriptions for existing position titles. I don't think that's good practice. You currently have someone in a P2 position, and when you start changing their job descriptions, then they have rights to look at, and it's just not a good way to do business. I'm going to go with John. When you do hurried things because you're trying to solve something on the fly, now you're talking about changing the job description. If in concept what you're saying is we're just going to clarify some of these bullets to include the bicycle and pedestrian activities, and it's not going to impact the P2 rating on this position, I could support what you're trying to do. Because every time you change a job description, the union, the employees have a right to look at what's happening, because that means the person in the current P2 position will have a right to discuss. We just don't willy-nilly go change job descriptions. If it's just to clarify and add the few little bullets that are just a fuller description, I don't have an issue. I just want to make...
Changing the job description?
Well, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that I don't think we do that without hearing from Melanie, our personnel...
We have, yeah, when we change the job descriptions, it goes through HR, and then everybody that is in that class...
Has to sign new job descriptions.
Has to sign, you know, has to agree to it. So that is the process we go through when we change a job description.
And I just want to make sure that nothing we're going to do, first of all, we're delaying hiring a position that we're trying to get done for the grant to get on board, because we only have a year left. Is that correct?
The current grant expires in September 30 of 2020. However, we anticipate the next funding for the grant to be put out for proposals any day now. And so having all of our ducks in a row is important so we can communicate a strategy that we've all bought into, that we can, you know, communicate commitment to this program to the funders.
That's what I said. I'm just concerned, the longer we let the position go vacant, we're not going to have a success from this phase to show for the next phase of funding. And again, I'm okay if it's just to add clarity, if that's appearing what we're doing. But I don't want, first thing, I don't want to see the P2 become a P3, or again, you put so much emphasis in, we can't even hire it. Again, we can't hire the position. So I just offer that up as comment.
I'll just go on the record. I think from what we've heard today, we can satisfy what's being discussed. We can tweak the job description a little, enough to get some verbiage in there, and then we will really hit it hard in those supplemental questions to make sure that our candidates do have that strong experience, our existing planner position. They don't have a lot of experience with bike and ped, so we have to be careful that we don't force the job description into a requirement that they don't have. But from the discussion we've heard, I think we can, we can fit that all in there and make it work.
You know, I think there are examples of duties that you put into a job description, and not everybody who fills that job duty has all of those qualifications. I think that, you know, that is understood. There's not, you know, it's particularly in a planner position where you may be program planning in one very specific area, and you hire to that skill, and you're right on by saying that the questions that you ask in the interview and the supplemental questions that you ask, as Lori indicated, even on the application, sort of steer it into that slot or that track. But that doesn't mean that you can't put it in the job description that, you know, because, as you said, not everyone's going to have those skills.
John, is your light still on?
It is on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put my light on before Lori made reference to me and my, let's not hurry, let's not... My general comment regarding hurrying or not going fast enough in government doesn't exactly apply here, and I'm not crossing verbal swords with Lori, but I actually tend to agree with Stacy. I think what's the elephant that's not being spoken of here in the room is that people in the bike pedestrian community, of which I am a member, are concerned that what we're doing perhaps is de-emphasizing that part. And I agree with Stacy that I don't want to see that de-emphasized. I do want to see it either in the job description or aggressively a part of the effort to hire this new planner if we do this. My concern about not hurrying or hurrying is how fast we go on changing things like the 10% that's being asked because we're moving this up a notch. So I'm not disagreeing with Lori, but I'm not with her on the reasoning behind it. I'm more with Stacy regarding, let's be sure that the bike and pedestrian community is well represented and is not going away just because we're changing this role.
I think, I think a key thing is that it, you know, in the staff summary, it says, "Staff is requesting approval to eliminate the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position." So I can see when you read that as a strong advocate of the bicycle and pedestrian community, where you would think that by eliminating the position, we're eliminating the importance of what that position accomplishes. But I want to hear you guys say that we are not doing that, so that we can put on the record that we're not in any way diminishing the importance of the bicycle and pedestrian component of what this job does. We're just making the title look different.
That's absolutely correct, Supervisor. The language in the agenda title is simply administrative. It's the words and the processes administratively that are required to change the position. You eliminate one and you add another, but for all intents and purposes, we're just, we're changing the description and the title, and in no way are we reducing the importance of the functions that exist in the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator job description today.
Well said. I think all of us up here are very proud of the fact that we're a bicycle-friendly community, and we want to see that continue on and actually move up a couple notches as we go forward and build complete streets in the city here. So, you know, I can go either way with either what Supervisor Bagwell said or what's going here. You know, it seems like the, you know, the solution, it might be if we can do it with tweaking the descriptions without causing a question with respect to our other employees and our unions, that we should probably proceed down that road and let it go. But, you know, my main concern is, one, I want the position to be able to be filled, and two, I want it to be somewhere where if someone gets in that position, they have the ability to move up or move to another area, you know, so that they have some upward mobility in the world. And I also want to make sure that we are doing the right thing by our bicycle and pedestrian community, period. Okay? All right, so let's see if we can try a motion.
I move to approve the staffing changes requested, including a supplemental questionnaire and clarifying revisions to the job description as discussed on the record.
Second. There's a motion, a second. On a motion, and discussion, further discussion? Yes.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I don't like the fact it comes, as I'm sure Lori, I don't want to speak for her, feels it's tough, but at the same time, I think you've done a good job of giving me your rationale for getting caught yourselves between a rock and a hard place, so I'm hopeful for this.
All right. Go.
Comment, too. So earlier today, the court system, Nevada court system, stuck us with a bill for several hundred dollars, unfunded mandate. The legislature had an item where the legislature stuck us with $78,000 that we probably don't need to be responsible for. And now, whether it's granted or not, now we have items in front of us outside the budget again. You know, Lucia mentioned that the budget savings will cover the cost of this position in year one, but after that, it doesn't. So now we're hit up with another $100,000 bill for this, and at some point, we up here have to figure out how to pay for all this. And so, you know, I mean, I'm just running a tab here, and we're up to like half a million dollars today on items that we're looking at that, you know, we got to figure out how to pay for now. So it's just, it's a dilemma for us. So understand, when we push back on items like this, it may not be because of the benefits or detriments of a particular item, but we do keep tab up here of the bill that comes along with this.
Lori?
So I want to, I want to indicate that this one is a grant-funded position, so when the grant goes away, if it's not renewed, as you discussed, so let's say you put in to get a new grant, when it comes out and we don't get it, this position would go away. I mean, I need to be clear, because just what Brad said, we don't have $100,000 in general fund to go find to continue the position. And I think it's important that the public understands, when it's grant-funded, it doesn't mean it continues. And so, because like he says, we're competing with everything in there. So this one's grant-funded, and I'm gonna, as long as it's clear in the motion that it will not increase the grade from a P2, I'm okay with supporting where you were going, that it's clear with staff and with Melanie that the rewrites will not cause the grade level to change from a P2.
And the motion? Lucia, I think you should answer that question real quick on the record. I know we're on discussion here, but make sure it's clarified that, just answer...
Sure, and I will add that this grant is unique in that the local match isn't actually dollars that we pay, it's an in-kind match. So the match, and it's included in the packet, we are overmatched right now, and how we do that in-kind match is administrative time to process the invoices and the heating and air conditioning and lighting for the office of the coordinator. So if we lost this grant, or we keep this grant, or with the increase in salary, it's covered by the in-kind match that we're already paying, and we are overmatched, just with our general administrative costs. And I will also put on the record that adding clarifications for the mode, we will work with HR to ensure that it does not change the grade from, to increase.
Brad, you got it? Okay, further discussion? Let's go to discussion, all right? Anybody? All right, we ready for the vote? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Let's take up, Ms. Hicks, is this yours again, 17 Charlie? All right. Go.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. The item before you is for discussion and possible action regarding a proposed resolution declaring it to be in the best interest of Carson City and its residents to offer the reconveyance of a permanent well located at APN 007-20105 to the persons that donated the property, Charles G. Hutter III and Colleen L. Hutter. Authorizing the Real Property Manager to make a written offer of conveyance to the Hutters and authorizing the manager upon their acceptance to execute a deed of reconveyance. This item before you today, and I just put up a general vicinity map so that everybody knows the location we're talking about off of County Line Road. Back in the 80s, the city took over the Lakeview Water System. In the early 2000s, it was realized that there were not easements for the existing wells that were located on several private properties, the Hutters being one of those properties. At the time, the Hutters agreed to provide both the well and the easement to the city and at no cost. They were entitled to have an appraisal and also to be provided just compensation, and they waived that. Since this time, the water in this well has uranium levels, and the city is no longer utilizing the well. We could cap the well, and it would cost us approximately $5,000 to do so, but the Hutters have expressed their interest in receiving the well back, and they would like to use it for recreational purposes. So they would be going through an application to change with the Division of Water Resources to change that from a municipal use to a recreational use. So the item before you, if approved, would authorize me then to send them a letter for that reconveyance, and we could process it from there.
Well, I think that speaks highly of the landowner up there, you know, donate a well and land. And from my perspective, it's the right thing to do. If we're not using it to deed it back, let them do what they're going to do with it, and they can process what they want through DWR. So, all right. Any public comment on this issue? Board? Anybody?
Yeah, are you ready for a motion?
Your motion's...
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-R-24.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. Carried. Okay. I don't see the electronic version coming up here yet. There it is. All right. All right. Oh. Want to break? All right. We'll be in recess. Standing, stand in place recess for five minutes. Thanks.
He needs to go.
To us, we kind of have an internal policy. We like to get back within 24 to 48 hours of those responses. Either with an email response, a phone call. In other instances, we've invited residents in to actually sit down and go over the plans with them. So we really try to make an effort to respond to those. It's not always the response that that people want to hear, and sometimes we get multiple responses about the same thing. And but we always look at it and we always try to offer a response. So I just want to make that known that we really do try to make an effort there. So design progression. So underground utility design, this is the stuff you will not see on your plans, but there's a lot that happens with that on this project, as you know, water, sewer, stormwater investment, fiber optic line, all going on underneath what you see in the pretty pictures up there, but there's a lot happening. Landscape and street lighting, we've we've taken that to the next level, working with our electrical engineers, well as our design workshop, our landscape architect, to really get that right. So that's 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 advanced quite a bit. Crosswalk locations, we do have those illuminated crosswalks. There's three of them on the project. As a complete streets project, we thought it was very important to provide those opportunities for people to get east-west across Carson Street. So we have provided those to make it a complete streets project. The roundabout design refinement, that has evolved. What you see in that picture is where we are today. We think it's a really good roundabout design. I do want to talk to address the public comment this morning as far as the roundabouts. So this is nothing new. We've been looking at a roundabout along this corridor for a long time. It's included in the plan of expenditures in 2014 for the infrastructure tax around about. It was part of our Tiger grant application, in my opinion, a big strength of why we received the $7.6 billion that we did. We think that it's going to be a very efficient intersection. From a maintenance standpoint, traffic signals are, there are a lot of time in maintenance in the future. So roundabout essentially, you build it and it's maintenance-free, which is really nice. So that's a big advantage. The other part of this roundabout is we are setting it up for that future fourth leg connection to Curry, which is a big reason we wanted we wanted it here and to make that future connection. We're hoping that it will happen to make that really work well with Curry Street. And then also, the roundabout location is a kind of a transitional feature. You have 35 miles per hour south, a larger commercial corridor. And as you start coming from the south, it's this transitional zone to head into a little bit slower, 25 mile per hour speeds north of Stewart, and really transition into more of a downtown feel there. As we mentioned in the past, and I have it on the final bullet there, we are planning a gateway feature at that roundabout. So this is going to be a nice transitional feature there. So I did want to point out, we've had multiple public comment on roundabout locations, going back 2014, public input. We've done two different analysis studies to select the preferred location of the roundabout. So we really have put a lot of time and effort in getting this roundabout right. And I just wanted to give that history to do address that earlier public comment. I also want to talk about the concern there with reducing lanes north of Stewart. Back in 2009, when the freeway came through here, or the highway, before the extension from William to Fairview was built, there was 30,000 vehicles a day that came through there. There's 12,000 today. We don't need two lanes in each direction. It's it's perfectly, the setup that we have today will work well in the future, not only after the project, but also in the 2040 scenario. And and part of that expectation study that we had in front of RTC in June talked about how it's going to function. So we have really looked hard into this, not just at the staff level, but also using outside consultants. So I did want to provide a response to that. Bike lane transition areas, this is one of the comments that we received. We further define those areas in the 90% design. I'll talk a little bit on the next side. There's still some tweaking that needs to be done to get it right, but we think we're getting close there. We appreciate the feedback that we've had from some of the biking community on that and really, you know, getting their comments in. So we are, we have implemented more into this 90% design and we're planning on doing a little more after this as well. Gateway feature update, as I mentioned, we are planning monument type structure in the center of the the roundabout location there with this project. We will be stubbing out everything we need, electrical for lighting, if we need that in the future. It'll all be set up to accommodate a future structure there. We were considering building a foundation as part of this project. However, we, not knowing what that final structure is going to look like, we don't want to invest a bunch of money and realize we either designed something way too big or way too small. We feel like in the future, when we determine what that final monument is going to look like, we can get in there and install it without too much disruptions. Maybe we have to replace a couple shrubs in that roundabout, but it should be pretty minimal. So I just wanted to give you an update on where we stand with that.
Can I just ask a question about that? That that was, so I just, I just want to confirm, we're bringing all utilities into the middle, gas, water, electrical? Because I don't want to miss an opportunity to be able to use any of those utility features.
There's no gas that we're planning there, but we do have water and electrical.
Okay, and gas can't be brought in? I mean, if we wanted to do a feature that had some sort of flame or something? Well, you know, I am the fire guy.
We didn't know if something burning.
You can't discount the excitement of a good flame, you know? You don't know, you don't know.
Yeah.
A little fire and water, you know, insane pools off the deep, you know?
We don't have anything planned. I, we can look into that and review it and see if we think that might be. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Supervisor Jeremy, as far as not leaving us in a situation where we can't accommodate what we want in the future. So we will definitely review.
I mean, I guess my just point is if it if it happens to be close.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't advocate that you have to move it two miles. I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
But if there happens to be an option for it there, when you're, you know, digging up the street to put stuff over there.
Absolutely. Yeah, point noted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I personally think that the gateway feature should be a big bronze statue of the mayor on his warhorse.
Not me, man.
With Stacy's water and fire.
Monaster's fire.
We'll see if we can incorporate that, Mayor. So here's the the slide. I did want to just touch, we're still reviewing some of these comments, but I did kind of want to just provide an update to the board of what has been discussed. I know Supervisor Barrett is passionate about the the first bullet point there, northbound speeds at the Clearview Crossing. So this is vehicles coming up from the south approaching Clearview, where we're bringing the multi-use path from the west side of the road across the crossing, and then it will go north, the multi-use path on the east side of the road. Staff did look in this. It is a signalized intersection, so it's a fairly safe crossing for people. But we did look at reducing speeds prior to the intersection, and we felt that it actually makes sense there because you're transitioning from three lanes at about Appian, and then you start to transition down to two with this project. So the, what we're planning on doing is you would have, it's 50 miles per hour south, south of Appian. We'd have a 45 mile per hour sign at Appian, and then a 35 mile per hour sign at about Snyder, getting people, reducing speed and kind of that, you know, that transition zone where it goes down to two lanes through that intersection. So we think it's a good engineering solution and makes for a safer intersection there. So wanted to bring that update up. Deceleration lanes.
I'm on the other end of that. I still think it's too slow. I still think 35 miles an hour is too slow. That's just my two cents.
It's a, it's about a 500-foot section between Snyder and and Clearview, just so you know.
35 all the way is too slow from, I mean, I think it makes sense to hit 25 as you get past the roundabout, but before that, I think 40 is a better speed personally, but, you know, I'm kind of a lead foot, so.
Wouldn't we just look at, I don't know, why wouldn't we just look at the speeds after we actually see it implemented and then say, we were right or we were wrong, and fix it according to the actual traffic patterns and issues?
Yeah, and we talked, we had that flexibility after the project, as you mentioned, but we did talk, we had a nice discussion with one of our kind of signal experts and talked about how that would function. Now, we are doing some signal timing with this project, hiring a consultant to look at that before the project, or I guess right after the project's implemented, to tweak with signal timing. So there may be reviewing this in the future down the road, but we felt like we were comfortable heading this direction as far as when the project opens up. So the next bullet there is deceleration lanes. And so I want to be clear, because this, we have received comments, and most of those comments, we have responded as well in the past. I believe all of them, at least that we have received. We, I want to kind of give a little history of how we've looked at decelerations, deceleration lanes for the project. So this is the right turn pockets where you pull out, so through traffic can keep going through. All deceleration lanes that are present today that were based off, you know, 45,000 vehicles per day and 45 to 50 mile per hour speeds that you see today, those are all being maintained after the project. We further evaluated, so obviously, we're going to go down to about 25,000 vehicles per day right after the project and slower speeds. But we wanted to look, not only at the staff level, but we hired a consultant to further look at deceleration lanes throughout the project. We had them look at every intersection. We also selected a couple of the major driveways, including the Rayleigh's, which is about the highest trip generation driveway along there. So they analyzed it and determined that there was not a need to add a deceleration at the lane at those locations. We did implement, we lengthened some right turn lanes and some left turn lanes as a part of this project. We did add a deceleration lane at, I believe, one location, Fifth Street. So we have implemented some, but our our analysis and our consultant's analysis has recommended that there's no deceleration lanes needed right after the project or in the 2040 scenario. So we are taking, those are based off engineering methods and design standards. We don't think it would be responsible to just add additional pavement, just in case something changes in the future. I will point out, and again, all the studies indicate that we don't need these, but particularly on the west side of the street, if a deceleration lane at a certain driveway location may be needed in the future, there may be options to accommodate in that future, because it's just really landscaping that affects the parcel that would benefit from the deceleration lane, that would have to be removed to accommodate a lane. So we've taken that very seriously. I just wanted to talk about the different history, not only at staff level, but also outside consultants, looking at not only intersections, but also major driveways along that corridor.
It's, Dan, is it possible relative to that? Because I, you know, obviously not a traffic engineer, but I I drive that section northbound, and even now with three lanes, traffic stops. It stops with people making right turns into either the Olive Garden or the Rayleigh's driveways. And I'm wondering if it's within our powers, maybe a legal question, to make those two driveways so that they're exit-only and not entry driveways? And that may solve the issue without expending additional funds. I don't know if we have the right to do that. I suspect we do, but, you know, that might be a consideration. So where Olive Garden is and where the Rayleigh's driveways are, you can, they can make right turns out of there, but they wouldn't be able to make right turns in. So that still leaves Clearview, Eagle Station, and Coontz, where they can access all of those shopping centers with right turn lanes that don't impede traffic. I don't know if that's a solution.
So.
Seems like a.
You, the, and I think we talked about it in the past, we can look, I mean, obviously, it's not, it wasn't recommended by the consultant that we did, that we hired to do it. We can, we can talk with them again. The thing, the issue with having a right turn lane there is you're basically eliminating that landscape buffer on the multi-use path.
Yeah, I'm not advocating right turn lane. I'm advocating making them exits only, so that there would not be the ability to turn right from Carson Street into those driveways. They could turn right out of the driveways, but they could not turn right into the driveways. That would eliminate the problem, because there are right turn pockets that they can access all of those shopping centers at Clearview, at Eagle Station, and at Coontz. All three of those intersections have right turn lanes. I think you're adding one at Coontz Lane, because there isn't one there now. So I think that's smart, and I think it doesn't restrict access to any of the businesses there. They still have three major roads that they can get to all those businesses on, and and it will eliminate that right turn hazard at the two spots where I think it's most impactful.
Yeah, I think it's a good comment. We need to investigate it a little further and make sure that, yeah.
I'd like you to at least consider it. I don't need, I don't think you need to go back to the traffic engineer. I think you can make the decision, we can make the decision.
Absolutely.
You know, you're not, it would cost us, I mean, it's essentially a no-money decision for the most part.
We'll look into it. So moving on, illuminated crosswalk connections to Frontage Road. Supervisor Bonkowski's brought this up, and one of our illuminated crossings is connected to the multi-use path, but it doesn't extend the connection to the Frontage Road. So that's something we're going to implement with with between 90 and final, so I just wanted to point that out. Roundabout bypass lane, this has been brought up, a couple of public comments and was brought up, discussed a lot last night at RTC. So I did want to talk a little bit about it. We have looked, we've, where we started with the roundabout design, we were using the bypass lane that you have today, which is very, very high speeds. We have gone back and forth with the roundabout design. We really feel that the roundabout that we present today is most optimal for considering all users. We also want to point out, we just want to make sure that the public understands the distinction between what's there today and what it is going to be in the future. We've tightened up that radius, so speeds have to be reduced to be able to make that turn in the future. From an operation standpoint, the way it is set up today, it's going to function better in the future. So I did want to point that out. We also, from a simplistic, easier-to-navigate standpoint, you know, we talked, we started out kind of with a single-lane roundabout. Now it's kind of a partial multi-lane roundabout. So we wanted to keep this the way it is. There's a big demand for that right turn to go to the state offices over there. So from an operational standpoint, it works well that way. But also, from a driver that's heading north through the roundabout, being able to enter that single lane and not have the dual lanes there is a more simplistic approach. So again, I, you know, we try to satisfy, and and we hear public comments, and, you know, I think no design is probably going to satisfy everybody, but we feel very strongly that what we have today is a solid design and is going to work well in the future. So I did want to address that, as we did spend quite a bit of time discussing that last night. Couple other comments that were brought up, additional signage for bike lanes. We've talked with a lot of the cycling community about that. We put out at RTC the striping plans, so not only the commissioners, but the public were able to review what we're proposing from a striping and signage standpoint. So we did receive some really good comments on things that we could maybe do better from the signage on the bike lanes to make it more clear. We're looking at implementing those when we go from 90 to final. There was discussion last night about green paint at bicycle transition zones. So these are areas where you may have a right turn lane that comes out, and the cyclist has to go from the outside lane by the curb and cross that right turn lane in those high conflict areas potentially, possibly using green paint on those. We had a good discussion last night. I think city and RTC Supervisor Begwell and Supervisor Bonkowski know that we have explored green paint on other projects. We, it's something, you know, every new thing that we try to implement, we have to consider the long-term maintenance implications of those, what it's going to cost us to maintain in the future. The product that we are looking at for the green paint is something, we wanted something that's durable, and it's going to hold up for a couple of years. We're not going to be out there painting it every year. And the product that we like, it would basically require another contractor to do it, something our city staff probably can't do. So from a cost standpoint, it's something that we need to consider a little more. Now, in saying that, we are going to look at this between 90 and final. But I just wanted to, kind of the discussions that we've been having internally, I just wanted to point that out, because that was a big talking point as well last night. Northbound bike lane transition zone at roundabout, another comment that we talked about. This is for cyclists coming from, using the multi-use path on the east side of the road, approaching the roundabout, and how, if they want to take a lane through the roundabout, how they transition off that multi-use path into the roundabout. We had, we improved this area much from the 60 to 90%. I think there's still, based off the feedback we received and our discussion, again, with the cycling community, I think we can re-stripe some of that area to make it more effective and safer for the cyclists. So we are going to look into making that better between 90 and final. So I just want to point out, I think I covered most of the high-level stuff from last night, but I did, I did want to go over those briefly on this slide.
Dan, can I ask, is the, is the, is it a complete streets requirement to have not only a multi-use path, but a bike lane? Or was that something we put into design because of input that we received?
Yeah, it's not necess, I mean, it's not a complete streets requirement. There's nothing says that you have to have both. Our decision at a staff level is we felt we were meeting the needs. You know, 90% of the users, maybe even higher, are probably going to prefer riding on a multi-use path. So we're providing that opportunity for everybody. The cyclists have the option to take a lane if they want, or they can ride on the multi-use path that we're providing for them. So we felt like, you know, it's a balancing act, right? You're trying to satisfy, complete streets is about satisfying all and really considering all when you're designing a project. And I think we have a project today that is considering all those different users.
And so there are a couple of spots, including at the roundabout that I'm looking at, where the the bike lane that's part of the traffic pattern is actually a shared travel lane.
Yes. To go through the the roundabout on a bicycle, you will have to take a lane. There is no separate bike lane, and that is per our MUTCD standards requirements, that you just don't stripe a bike lane in a roundabout.
Okay, thank you.
And and to your point, these transition, I talked about the northbound, but really, on all those approach points, we have these transitional areas where we give opportunity with signage, as well as these exit ramps, for somebody who is riding on a bike lane and is not comfortable taking a lane through the roundabout, they will have plenty of time to exit, take their bike, and go past the roundabout, and then enter on the bike lane on the other side. So we do have all those built into the design that you see today. So changing gears a little bit here, this might have caught you guys a little off guard, but I did want to, like I said earlier, we have been meeting at staff level. As you know, as part of the plan of expenditures, there was the process, just like we did downtown, to form a NID, to help maintain the improvements along the corridor. I just wanted to give you a really high-level overview of kind of the discussions that have happened today, and then talk about that timeline moving forward. So as you can see, it's, I apologize, it's kind of a small photo, but we have determined kind of a preliminary NID boundary, which is highlighted in green along the corridor. We are looking at that assessment methodology, so we're looking at, we're running a ton of different scenarios, looking at parcel, overall parcel area, building square footage, frontage length, and incorporating that all into how those allocations for the assessment will occur. So we're looking at those scenarios. We're also putting together of a maintenance kind of scope of work that we anticipate in the future. I do want to just, it's it's going to be different than what downtown's, I mean, you don't, obviously, like, the splash pad is part of that. We're not going to have a splash pad. There's not going to be the daily, I mean, downtown, they're pretty much out there every day. That's not going to happen here. There's just not, the frequency is not required along this corridor, is what we're anticipating. We do have, and I just kind of highlighted a couple of items that we're looking at, including today, snow removal, landscape and irrigation system maintenance, multi-use pavement preservation, litter removal, et cetera. So there's, we're forming all of that. I do want to talk about, our plan is to come back in October to you, once we kind of have a recommended South Carson NID that we would like to form and how that assessment will look. We would like to come back to you with an update, an informational meeting for you to provide feedback to staff. So we're looking at October timeframe for that. And then I did add some dates there, November to January is where we would start the outreach to the property owners and businesses, as well as January to June 2020 is that assessment implementation to get ready for fiscal year '21. So I didn't want you to think that we weren't working on that. We have been actively working on that, and you will see us again with some more details here in October. So schedule moving forward, it's, where it's getting more real. We're getting closer to that construction milestone. Design, like I said, we're still on track for about September, October 2019 to finish up design. Public meetings and outreach, we are planning, and we've done this on the downtown projects, after we're done with design, and we, around the time we're executing the construction contract, preferably, obviously, after that, we're looking at holding a public meeting for the, just to inform the public of details on how construction is going to look, so what detours are going to be like, how this project is going to be built. We would be there with the contractor to answer questions and just give an opportunity for either interested residents or business owners along the corridor to be able to discuss their specific site and how it's going to look. So we are going to provide that opportunity. As I mentioned before, November 2019 to January 2020 is the NID outreach to property owners and businesses. Board and RTC meeting updates, so September, October, we're planning on bringing the Tiger Grant Agreement forward to you. We're working with the Build, which is basically the Tiger Office, it's now renamed Build Office, to bring a grant agreement forward to you to execute that. October, as I mentioned, discussion on the NID methodology. And then November, December 2019 is when we plan to bring that construction contract execution back to the board. With that, we, all these comments that we've gathered from not only RAC, but also RTC and whatever comments you give today, we would plan on bringing back to the board and basically giving you an update on the status of those comments when we execute the contract, when we bring that back. So you will get a chance to see how we've addressed these comments that might come up today. So I wanted to let you know that. Construction schedule, plan is still to start mobilizing the end of 2019 with the actual, like, digging and disturbance, I guess, happening in construction early 2020, January timeframe. And we're looking probably more at a nine- to 10-month project, but we, we're getting into those details right now with with SNC. So that's an update on the schedule. As I mentioned, CarsonProud.com, a lot of information there, including this roundabout video that I want to play for you. And this is, I think you'll remember, RTC provided some feedback. We've also gotten feedback from the public that they would like the city to make an effort to help educate the public on using the roundabout. So we put together this video in June. It has been shared pretty heavily on social media. We all encourage anybody watching this to please help spread this video as well. We think it's pretty informational, so I'm going to play it right now.
Current roundabouts in Carson City are only single-lane roundabouts, whereas the design for the South Carson Street and Stewart Street intersection is a multi-lane roundabout. This roundabout is intended to reduce traffic delays and, most importantly, improve traffic safety. So how do you use a multi-lane roundabout? Here's how. When entering a roundabout, be sure to pay close attention to the signage. Know which lane to use before entering. You must yield to traffic before entering. Look to your left. If there's traffic clearance, proceed to go through. With multi-lane roundabouts, drivers must yield to both lanes. If you are going to turn left or make a U-turn, stay in the left lane. If you are planning to make a right turn, stay in the right lane. Most importantly, stay in your lane. Always yield to pedestrians on both the entrance and exit approach. If an emergency vehicle is entering a roundabout, exit at your destination and pull over immediately. Never stop or pull over in the roundabout.
So please share, if you can, text subscription service. I know you've seen this slide multiple times, but it's important to show every time we have the opportunity. If you text CarsonProud to 31996, you sign up for automatic text notifications. So for example, when that roundabout video was posted, you would have received a text that said, a roundabout video is posted. It'll be particularly, I think, good for people to have during the construction stage to understand what's going. to understand what's going on with traffic control down there. As I mentioned, social media, we're posting not only to Carson Proud but also to all the social media platforms. There's Tom Grundy, the project manager. Like I said, we really do make an effort to respond and respond quickly to public comments that we receive. Tom, you know, he's, works really hard at that. So there's his email there as well as a phone number. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or concerns with this panel? I know you guys, some of you have been through it with RTC already.
Yeah, I have a question. I was just texting to, because I hadn't done that, to Carson Proud.
It's a good endorsement, right there.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
The, I had a conversation with a couple of folks about the roundabout, and they applauded the video and thought it was well-done and great, and I think it's going to be really important to try and do outreach on the roundabout and how to drive in it in more ways than just a YouTube video. So I'm hoping to plant the bug that maybe we do something in our utility bill, like a trifold or something, that goes out in the utility bill, and maybe that same trifold can, you know, we can work with the appeal and our online partners to put that out there as well. Because I think people learn in different ways, and there's a lot of people aren't comfortable watching a YouTube video, but if they got a trifold or something, it might, might help.
Yeah, that's a great, excellent idea, and we definitely can incorporate a pamphlet or something to go out with the utility bill. It's a great idea.
Other comments or questions from the board before we go to public comment? Okay, public comment on this issue? Yes, sir, come on up, you've been waiting a long time.
I have a few questions pertaining to the crosswalks. Is that going to be a lighted situation? Are there going to be stop-and-go lights for the pedestrians?
I don't need your name on the record.
Oh, Glenn Bush.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you there.
No, no problem. Yes, the three crosswalk locations that I talked about are going to be illuminated crosswalks. So not every crosswalk on the corridor, but those three will be the push-button crosswalks like you see on Stewart Street or by the grocery outlet on North Carson Street, where you can push, and then the flashing rectangular, yeah, will flash and you can cross.
Okay, now, if the people are, let's say on the south side of the roundabout, if the people are walking across there, that can potentially create backup or trouble in other portions of the roundabout. I mean, just because you stop them here, there's going to be people that are coming around here, that they're going to either have to stop for them at the last minute or, I don't see how they can stop, putting stop, without putting stop signs or stop lights, that they're going to be able to control the car traffic. It could become a problem with car traffic. Even though the light, the people are not, are walking here, it could affect people here, or it could affect cars here. Is that correct?
So they will be required to stop for pedestrians that are crossing the roundabout, and Tom can interject if he wants, but I, all these spacing requirements, so you can kind of see these, there's these gaps where the crosswalks are set back. Those are by design to accommodate safely vehicles to, like, for example, I guess, this is a good example here, if you can see my cursor up there, a vehicle that comes out has enough room for a car lane here that they can stop for a pedestrian to cross without holding up the circulation of the roundabout there. So those are all by design, those spacing requirements for those crosswalks.
Okay, I realize that there will not be a lot of people walking there. I mean, it'll be a, sort of a, occasionally somebody will walk, and in that area, there is no reason for pedestrians. They're just not going to be there. Is that right or wrong? I mean, it's an area where there is little need for crosswalks or anything else. I'm not saying get rid of the crosswalks, but...
Yeah, in response to that, I mean, the purpose of this project is to promote pedestrian and cyclist activities. With the multi-use path, we anticipate there will be a lot more activity there, and those crosswalks will be used not only by pedestrians but also the cyclists as well. So probably will be different than what you see today as far as activity. That's our hope.
Well, I see the crosswalks as a, not an everyday issue but occasional issue. The next one, I know you have the arrows and the straight aheads and all of that painted down on the road, but are you giving the drivers some kind of warning with a metal sign, a block away, or, you know, if you want to go straight, you stay in this line? Is there going to be something like that there?
Yes, sir. So that's a really good question and very important part of our design. So what you see with this plan is just the striping, but there are a lot of arrows, as you mentioned. The signage plan, which we didn't include with this packet, RTC saw it, there's multiple signs to warn drivers to be very clear which lane they need to be in, and that's honestly probably the most important part of an effective roundabout is what you mentioned is proper signage. So we're definitely, that will be a part of this project.
Okay. The other question I have really is, has nothing to do with questions on the crosswalk design, but I question, why did the city spend so much money and repaint Stewart Street up to Carson Street? I mean, they spent money with either paving or sealing or striping, and now here, this has been in the works for a long time. So why didn't we as a city people realize that that didn't need to be spent maybe a hundred grand there, or, you know, we're just spending money, money, money? Why are we doing these things knowing, why are we doing this design knowing that you're going to change it?
Yes, so in response to that, that actually was not a city project, that was an Nevada Department of Transportation project, and they actually ended their improvements, we, they came a little past them, but it, pretty minor cost that they spent on there as far as sealing, some very surface sealing and some striping, that that was not a city project, just so you know.
But it's money. Why were they not advised not to do it? It's still money.
I don't know that we, not to interrupt your train of thought here, but, you know, we can advise all you want, they've been kept in a loop all along about what we're doing on the roundabout area here. So, you know, that decision was made there. I would agree with you that whether it's the state or us, it's money, but their decision is their decision. So, you know, that's all I can tell you. It's not, it wasn't one with us, but I can also tell you, and Dan, you can confirm or not, you know, we've been, we work very closely with NDOT all the time, so.
Okay, well, I don't see the roundabout being a forever problem for our local people. I do see it being a definite problem for people that are from, out of our area. And I, if I could have said something a long time ago, I just didn't know about it. I would not advise to spend all that money on a monument, is what we're doing. We're building a monument.
I don't think we're doing a monument. The monument's tied, I mean, we're joking about what's going on in the middle of the monument there, but if you're, I understand what you're saying is that you don't like the roundabout.
I don't mind the roundabout, but why have a roundabout in an area that is not a true roundabout? It's a seventy-five percent roundabout.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
But it's, like I'm saying, it's not a real roundabout. That's all I had.
Got you.
Other public comment?
Hi, Doreen Mack, President of the, am I on? No? No? Yeah. Doreen Mack, President of the Downtown 2020 Group. I am curious about, when you come out of the roundabout and you're going north towards Fifth Street, we go north and we're heading down two lanes when you come out of the roundabout? Is that right?
There's only one lane out of the roundabout to the north.
There's one lane. So when we were working on the Main Street for the historic part of downtown, we had a real problem with that from there to Stewart Street because the businesses did not want to make that a one-way road. So what happens with the parking on Main Street as we have it on the historic downtown?
It'll, it'll not, it won't be a one-way road, there'll be a lane in each direction.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't be one-way.
So it still stays a four and then transitions or...
It's two lanes, southbound, one lane northbound with a center turn lane.
Okay, now, there is an issue when you get to Fifth Street, just before then, and that turn lane, and you see traffic backed up, people make the wrong mistake in trying to cross over. Are you going to lengthen that area in there?
Are you, are you going to northbound on South Carson?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did lengthen the right turn pocket, and part of that lengthening was due to the traffic, the right turn demand that we anticipate in twenty years from now with the build-out of the Lampa Ranch development. So we did take that account and the future demand for that right turn in this project design.
Okay. And I'm also curious about snow removal. Even, and last year we had a pretty good winter here. You guys did good on the streets, but we created these berms in front of the businesses on Main Street, and the businesses could not get through those ice berms to keep their own, to keep the sidewalks shoveled. Is there going to be a way to address that this year?
We haven't discussed that specifically, but we will, I will discuss that with our, with our maintenance crews that do the snow plowing and let them know your concern.
Great, thanks. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. All right, other public comment? Come on up, sir. Good morning.
Morning. My name is James Clark. I just moved here from Europe, where I spent twenty-four years with the Department of Defense as a Marine officer and as a Department of Defense educator. I lived in the Netherlands at the NATO base in Brugge for four years. We have roundabouts everywhere, bikes, lights, and roundabouts are all over the Netherlands. I look at the way you guys are doing this and the amount of money being spent, and the Dutch would be laughing their heads off at this. It's amazing. It's not hard to go into a roundabout. We have, where I came from, the last six years in Stuttgart, we have roundabouts all over the place. Thirty thousand Americans come there and are there with Africom, UCOM, Marine Forces Europe, and we adjust very easily to the roundabouts. It's not a big deal. And then I look at how much money's being spent in putting a monument out there?
I don't know if that decision has been made. I mean, a monument, which, like I said before, you know, we're talking about those things, but we're aware of those concerns.
As a logistics officer in the Marine Corps going to Afghanistan and Iraq, my first sergeant can make a roundabout in about four hours, just throw a bunch of, throwing out tires out there, and we got a roundabout on the main supply route. So the amount of money, the amount of planning, as the Dutch would probably say, keep it simple, stupid. That's what they need to do, and that's what, I mean, you need a lot of roundabouts around here, but you need a lot more lighting. Carson City is one of the darkest cities I've ever, ever seen. Going from Ash Canyon to Kings Canyon, that's all dark. So if you're going to do roundabouts, you got to have the lighting that goes with there and the bikes also, I mean, once again, we have the smallest little roads in the Netherlands, but we have bike lanes all over the place.
So let me ask you, I mean, just to clarify your comments, are you, do you like this? Are you in favor of this roundabout or not?
Absolutely for roundabouts, but the amount of money being spent to do it...
How much money, what do you, where's that figure coming from?
From what I've seen from the Carson Now, they put out money that was being expended for this roundabout. Maybe I misread it, but...
We had a contract that we did with Kimmy Horn to do it, the roundabout design, that's right. We had a design contract that's listed.
Right, well, that's, that's what I was commenting on.
Okay. Well, thank you and welcome home.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right, then we'll bring it back here. What's the board's pleasure on this one? Superintendent Bonkowski?
I'm going to approve the ninety percent design and authorize staff to complete the project design.
There's a motion, second on the motion discussion?
Yeah, just like to say thank you for the presentation and to the gentleman who apparently just left, that monument would be probably by some kind of a grant or raising the money, not from city general fund monies, but we want to do it right.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, nay, care rate? Okay, let's take one more, and then we'll take a little break and see where we're going to go for the rest of the day here. Let's take up, I think, let's take up Seventeen Echo. Another out-of-budget one, huh?
Good morning again, Mayor, members of the board, Darren Schultz for the record, and Eddie Qualieri here. We're going to kick this off a little bit. Yeah, the same comments I made on Seventeen Bravo apply here, and I apologize for the out-of-sequence, so we'll let Eddie take the lead.
All right.
Here, hold this target.
Hold the target.
Well, good morning still, I think. Eddie Qualieri for the record, Water Utility Manager. And this position got reexamined and looked at once Ritt Palmer, who was here for about twenty-four years, retired in late June, early, early July. I had the chance to kind of absorb what he was doing, relook at the duties that he was doing, and then reexamine if the job description was adequate or not, or if we needed more in the job or not. And what I came to a conclusion of is bringing more of the, some of the stuff I had in the staff report, which are additional tasks than Ritt was doing. A couple of those are water modeling assistance, future capital improvement projects that we could do more in-house rather than subbing out or having our engineering department do. A lot of them are water line replacements, well re-drills, things that don't require a lot of bodies, but still are projects that need to be put forward and tend to get backburnered to the bigger projects like roundabouts and everything. But if we could bring that more in-house with a engineer on my staff in the operations supervisor position, that would be great. And then more engineering-based knowledge of the water system and efficiencies on making it more efficient and sustainable for the long term. So that's why we are bringing this to you today, which is a reclassification from an S2 to a P4. The P4 adds the professional engineering license to the requirement. We're still keeping the operations duties with the licensing that that goes with, which is the distribution for and the treatment for, which is the highest licensing required. We're making that a two-year requirement to get. Someone coming in with an engineering background can get those licenses within two to three years. They may already have a few of them, like I had before I came, so it doesn't take maybe as long, or it may take a little longer, but that's where we changed it from more of an engineering role with the operations background as well. Within the packet, there's our division org chart that shows the job classes with the positions for your examination, and then I also added the job descri, the new job description with the new duties, which I'd be happy to go through with you and highlight some of the new duties that I previously mentioned. We also went out and looked at job descriptions in the area. Tamwa was one I looked at, and I included their manager, Water Operations and Quality Manager position and the org chart for you to look at, that closely resembles what this position does, along with the pay for that. So it's about a thirteen percent increase to the salary, but I think it's well justified with the engineering degree or the engineering license added. So with that, I would love to take your comments and questions.
Superintendent Barrett?
Why now and not next budget year? Why now and not next budget year?
Well, I'll just go ahead and say that I would like to hire somebody now and not have to wait to change it or to hire somebody that doesn't have that, that license and not, and then change it later.
You can't wait to hire?
Well, like I said, Ritt's been gone a couple months now and I'm feeling it very, very heavily. I'll tell you that much.
How much do you earn, sir?
How much do I earn? My, my current range is from, I think it goes to 125.
Other comments, questions on the board?
So if you can help me to, to make a good decision here, and I don't have the job description of the S2. So you didn't redline this so I could see where you were really changing the specifications of the job to warrant it going to a P4. So you said you could help me walk through that. One of them is you indicated that you're going to ask for an engineering license, so that licensure is of a higher order than what was in the S2 job description. What other changes were made that would warrant a reclassification?
Okay, I'll read, do you want me to read through all of them?
Well, I'm, I'm interested in what you changed.
So I added overseas special projects assigned by me, Water Utility Manager, must be available to provide assistance for water service disruptions. That's an important one as this position, as, as well as myself, will be the operators in charge of the system, which requires, since we're a surface water system, the NDP regulations require us to be basically on-call all the time, 24/7. And without multiple people covering each other, it's difficult. And then when you get, you know, classified employees covering, that adds into overtime and everything. So with, with the supervisor position and myself being the responsible in charge, we could cover the system at all times per, for NDP. Next is maintains and manages the water model for the city, coordinates asset management for the water system with the engineering department, a, a growing task that we've been seeing. Supervises the design, planning and engineering of new water system upgrades, well, or water treatment plant upgrades and other needs for the system, including well re-drilling.
And all of those are new duties?
These are all new duties, I'm stating. Oversees the city water resource plan for meeting the current and future demands for accounting for growth. That's something that's newly required in statute for the last legislative session that we bring forward to the board approval that we have. So it's, it's a new statute that we have to, we have one, but it's a new requirement from the legislature. Handles new business requests for the water system and interfaces with the community development and engineering staff, something we've been, we've been doing better at, but this position could even bring that more closer, that coordination. In charge of notification of water system disruptions, interfaces with regulatory agencies, another growing thing that we've been trying to get better at. Assists the Water Utility Manager with presentations to the Board of Supervisors and other committees and conferences. These are more general, assists with public outreach for the water system, something that I've been trying to increase as I've been here, that I, that I see even more things that we could do with that, with this position. Assists with emergency management duties as well. Those are all new to this position. And then the licensing was the professional engineering license. Then we changed the treatment certificates to have within two years of hire. And then I added more emergency management training through FEMA. So those are, those are all the additions to the job description.
Well, what, I wonder what was in the other one because that's almost the whole job description.
I know, it was...
I don't have one to compare.
It was, so the old job description didn't have any of that in it. So that's all additional. So if you just took out what I just said and it's the...
So the old one just used to have the final three bullets?
It had the first bullet, the final three, and then there's two more on the next page. And then I didn't change anything to the job description, which is the next part. I just changed the essential functions. And then the certificates and licenses changed.
So one of the things I didn't see, and maybe it's just semantics, but this is a brand-new job description, so do we want to anywhere in here indicate, just because they have to possess a license, but I thought we had a discussion that really then they would be a responsible charge at the facility, and I don't see that mentioned anywhere. I mean, that's the utilization of their license and I thought we had a discussion that you're existing because people that are already in your org chart are these level four certificate. We progress them as they gain certification. And I thought one of our discussions was the people in the current org chart at the level four did not want to be responsible charges. And yet I don't see that in here either, and so I'm just going to tell you, I'm not going to support this unless we specifically indicate they're going to be a responsible charge.
I could definitely add that.
If that makes sense, what I'm saying is...
That's a very good comment.
You're putting them on the hood.
Right.
Because I, I don't want to pay people for a grade four certificate that we don't get to utilize and meet the statutory condition of a responsible charge. So if you don't put it in here, I don't want to set up the same problem.
But also, also Supervisor Bagwell, it's, this is, this is, those other positions are classified. This is unclassified. They will do what we want them to do because that's what unclassified means, so, but we will add it in there.
But, but I'm learning that it better be in the, I don't know, better be in the job description.
It'll definitely get added in.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, John.
I turned it off. But I'll, I'll take the opportunity just to say that at, at the levels we're talking about of, of remuneration by the city, by the taxpayers. I'm not in a hurry to do this either, as Laurie said, but I'll just let it go at that.
I'll just make a comment to the other side of that. You know, it's hard to imagine something more fundamental than safe water production, safe water distribution and safe drinking water. And if our staff is saying that, you know, they're trying to professionalize this position, and I know the person who was in here before, he was a great person, did great work for the city, but he was an operational guy who moved up the ladder and wasn't a professional guy who had the experience and the wherewithal to do the kinds of things that Eddie is talking about here. So I can appreciate that there's a cost involved with this, but I can also appreciate that we're talking about some pretty damn important stuff. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Okay, further, further questions or discussions on board? All right, let's try a motion, see where we are.
I move to approve the staffing changes as presented with the addition of the responsible charge language.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Bonkowski on a motion discussion.
Yes.
Discussion's in order.
I, I'm not against it. I agree with Stacy. It's very important and it needs to be done. I'm just getting towards the end of my rope regarding things coming in the middle of the year, which I think we all have a concern about. And I empathize that you're overworked at the moment, but I also realize that we have a job to do up here and one of them is starting now means more money than starting later. So I, I understand that in both these cases, the previous one on the, on the bike and in this one, that things happen and you say, well, we got to fix this now. But our taxpayers don't get 13% increases and new job descriptions all that regularly and they pay the freight. I will support it, but I'm really, I really caution all department heads, you can't just keep coming to us.
I think...
Till budget time.
I, I just, just a, a discussion point. I've worked pretty closely with the water folks over the last year here on a number of myriad of very complex issues. And I understand how important, I think what Supervisor Giomi is saying, how important it is. It's, it's important for us to, one, stay ahead of the water curve in Carson City here. We're going to, we almost stepped out of that curve. Now we're back in, so my, my sense is that, you know, it makes a more professional department and, you know, if it helps these folks make some of these decisions and interact with other agencies, we need to do that. And if we'd have done that earlier, we might have been, if we'd had the dedicated resources earlier, we might not have been in some of the things we're in now that we're getting out of. So anyway, without going into detail about all this stuff.
Can I, can I just add that, you know, I agree that bringing positions forward at budget time is the best way to do it because it gives us the opportunity to evaluate the merit against everything we have to consider.
Yeah.
By the same token, we charge our department directors with managing their departments responsibly and we provide for them a means to bring forward to us when they believe they've reached a critical level and that something needs to be done outside that regular process. And I, I guess what I'm saying is we should, I think, subject them to the questions that we've asked, but it's my personal belief that we should not beat them up over the fact that they're bringing it forward. I think that's two separate points. I've been where they're sitting and they don't take bringing something like this forward lightly. And I believe we should challenge them, as I said, but in point of fact, the challenge should be on the merit of the position and not on the fact that it's getting brought forward. And I feel we're beating them up a little bit on that side of things and I don't think that's fair.
I think I resemble that statement. Your point's well taken, Stacy. I apologize, but it, it gets frustrating year after year. So I'm not, I shouldn't let my frustration show.
In a complex city, it, it's going to continue to happen because there are complexities here that just always go on, so I'll tell you that.
And the state, yes, as the mayor said, and the state's going to keep pushing things down to us. I understand reality.
All right, I got a couple more lights here. Supervisor Bagwell and Supervisor, who?
I'm sorry, I just missed one thing in discussion is if we need the treatment certificate four to stay in compliance with the responsible charge, how come we can wait two years? Why wouldn't that be something the person would come to at this level? Why isn't that, why do they get two years to obtain the certificate instead of a year? I, I'm just really trying to understand the, this is the second in command to you and why won't that person, why can't we give them two years? They might quit before they ever, anyway, why two years?
I understand, I understand the question. Again, it was more to keep the, the operation requirements in there, but shift to an engineer with operations background. Currently, we're meeting the, the guidelines with our existing operations staff, you know, with some complexities. I'm currently working my way towards my test, my operations certificate, so we'll be covered probably within three months from now with just myself on. But again, having that dual coverage really helps because right now, if somebody goes out of town, we have to cover it with somebody else. I mean, literally for a day, we have to let the state know that somebody else is on. So right now I'm working it out with my operations staff. They've been gracious enough to cover it for me, but this is more of a, a long-term, sustainable approach. So once we get somebody in, and they may have the, the requirements right now, but asking for both right away might be difficult to fill. So that's why it's given the, the two years to get that. So I would...
You're saying because you're recruiting an engineer more than you're recruiting a water?
Basically.
And so then you're just going to ask the engineer to go get the water?
If they don't have it already.
And how long's it, how long have you been here and how long's it taken to get it? I'm concerned about two years. I just want to...
Sure.
I don't understand why it's not one year. Get your required license within the year.
Right. So I've been here a year. I came with two of the licenses, a D2, T2. Unfortunately, it takes, if you have those, those done, they make you have a year of experience before you get your three, and then a year is a three to get your four. So I was looking at it that way in the sense that it's a two-year minimum, but it can be attainable in that time.
Brad? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with, with most of Stacy's comments and I don't think our intent up here is to ever beat up on staff. I think that at almost every opportunity that we can, that we let staff know that you're doing a good job and we appreciate that, but we do have a responsibility to push back and make sure or ensure that you do think twice or three times before you bring something to us that's outside the budget cycle. So I think that's just part of the process and hopefully staff doesn't take the comments personally. I'm speaking for myself, it's never intended that way. It's just so that I understand what's going on and I want to always tell staff when they're doing a good job and when I think they can do better, I'm going to tell them that. And so I think it's just part of the process. So for any department heads that we've offended out there, I apologize, but that doesn't mean we are going to stop doing it.
There is a, there is a check in the system that these all do go through IFC and you have to get approval from IFC to bring it to the board out of budget cycle, so we...
Right, but they're all softies.
We took some wire brushing before we got here.
We're the meanies up here.
I do want to, just for the record, say that I, I see on vacant positions where that is the easier time for staff to review the activities and that if you look at the ones that they're bringing, they're vacant positions. And so if someone has held a job for 20 years, 24 years, it's difficult to reclass that position and put on higher order activities because the person's not going to be able to meet them. And so I think what I'm seeing and I understand from a staff perspective is, look, now that so-and-so has retired, we can look to shape that position to meet more needs than we could with the person in it. So I do recognize, those should be the odds out that I'm seeing come outside of a budget, though, right? It shouldn't be the existing positions. If you wanted those reclassified, those should all be in the budget process, but you don't know when someone's going to retire or leave their job. They don't always tell you during the budget cycle, so you could bring it during budget. I would prefer that. We can put that on the record, everyone give plenty of notice for retirement, but I do think that vacant positions give you the opportunity to look. I just am disappointed it always costs us more money.
And I would just like to add that I think that some of my colleagues have done a very good job of chastising me for what probably sounded personal. At the same time, I, and I think everybody up here, though we approve these things, am always thinking of the taxpayer first. And it, it gets a little tough because in my 75 years of watching government, and when I say I started at age two, you didn't know my parents, so you don't know what I'm talking about. But in, in terms of watching it in 75 years, I have seen a flip in our, in our private and public sectors where the private sector, although some at the top are doing very well, private sector, which pays the taxes, is having a problem at levels that are less than our public employees are making, don't have the same benefits that our public employees are making. I don't feel bad about that for the public employees, but I do feel bad about it for the taxpayers. We went through a period, mm, 20 years here where people's salaries in the private sector have not been going up, their benefits have not been going up very quickly. In the public sector, they haven't been going up very quickly, but they've been going up quicker. So I hope you will accept my apology if I have beat up on anybody, but it's a great concern to me where we may be headed. be headed.
I'll just make one comment, brief comment, is that not only do we have to be sensitive to the funding sources, our taxpayers, what we do, but on the other side of that coin, we have to, in my view, anyway, we have to be, we're, we're an organization. We're not, you know, this board up here operates not unlike a board of directors of a private corporation. And we have to be responsible to not just those who pay our bill, but in my view, we have to be responsible for building a, a team of people who do the right work, timely, and are respected about it, and have our respect as well. And if we don't, then, you know, we're doing the taxpayers a real disservice. And so it's a, it's kind of a two-sided coin. I mean, I'll just leave it like that. I think, I'll just leave it like that. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay? Okay. Let's, help, help, let me ask the board here. If we do one more before we.
David's here.
All right, let's give it a try. All right.
Go ahead. Good morning, Mr. Marigan. Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. Item 18A is the inter-local agreement between the city, the Carson City District Attorney's Office, and the Carson City Cultural Tourism Authority. As you may recall, we were back here in June with a memorandum of understanding. The old agreement expired at that time, so we had 60 days. And essentially, the agreement has been rewritten. It's put, placed into more of a boilerplate format that other city contracts follow, so there's some more additional language. I also reached out to all of the department heads that were affected, and the description of services, to make sure that the description of what the city was providing to the CTA was an accurate reflection of what was actually going on. So we didn't really add anything, but it was, was reworded. And then we did update the, in Exhibit A to the agreement. The schedule of endorsed events is updated. This did go before the CTA Board of Directors on Monday, and they did adopt it with one addition, which I would like to incorporate on the record today for your consideration. And so the CTA approved it in a different section, but after a review with the city manager, we found a more appropriate section for it to go. So if you're looking at page three, using the number in the bottom middle of the page, in subsection C, under the first bullet point I, there's going to be a sentence added at the very end that says that this provision expires by limitation on May 31, 2021 pursuant to CCMC 4.08.080, subsection four. And really what that is, is that's an acknowledgement regarding the sunset of the 1% for the arts and culture component. So we wanted to make sure, because the agreement itself goes into June, towards the end of June of 2021, so we just wanted to reflect that, that that portion of the payment does end pursuant to the code. So I don't have really any other changes to highlight for you, but I am available for questions. David Peterson, Executive Director of the CTA, is also present, as well as Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director, who can answer any questions that you may have about any of the endorsed events or how that works.
Brad.
And exactly. On the endorsed, endorsed events, I'm glad to see it as an exhibit and not part of the agreement. Our policy has been to try to move towards that more. Is it the intent to update this on an annual or by annual basis, then?
That's correct. There is language in here that says that staff from the city will work with the CTA. I believe it calls for annual meetings for staff to meet and coordinate and, you know, update that is necessary.
And it doesn't need to be brought back to this body to change Exhibit A because we're not changing the agreement? Is that correct?
That's correct. And there's also language in the agreement that allows the Parks Director, the authority, to add endorsed events to the schedule. So it would not have to come back here in order to update just that part.
Thank you.
Other questions? Anybody? Other comment on this issue? Anybody? We ready for a motion?
I move to approve the agreement as presented, including the changes right into the record by the District Attorney's Office.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay? Carried. Okay. Well, now, let's have a discussion here before we recess. Is the Board of Health here? Okay. I think we'd better take a break. Here's my suggestion, folks. Why don't we take a break for lunch until 1:30, come back with the Board of Health and the last two remaining things, unless we wanna work straight through, and I think we might be able to do that, so that we could make the, the event this afternoon at 2 o'clock. I know it's kind of an imposition, and I, I agree with Supervisor Winkowski, you know, it's good to have lunch. So what's the pleasure of the board? What do you wanna do? Work or?
I made appointments this afternoon, so I prefer to work.
Work, work.
Doesn't matter to me. I'll do whatever, I'll do whatever everybody wants.
All right, then we're gonna continue on. We'll be in recess and wait for the Board of recess. We won't give five minutes, we'll just say, get up here and get going. Okay? All right.
2019 is presented.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Item 23A is discussion and possible action regarding the biannual report from Vitality Unlimited.
It is not on. It is on now. Thank you. Item 23A is discussion and possible action regarding the biannual 2019 report from Vitality Unlimited, as required by the city's contract with Vitality Unlimited. So I'll turn it over to you, Nikki.
So good afternoon, Nikki Aker. For the record, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, and we have Judith Stuckey with us today to provide the report for Vitality Unlimited. And she works here in our Carson City facility.
Thank you. Yes, I am Judith Rickett Stuckey. I do have one of those hyphenated last names. I wished I hadn't done. And I'm the Director for not only the residential program that's housed at the Health and Human Services, for which we're very grateful. I'm also the Program Manager for the new CCBHC that we started here February 1. So the report is really self-explanatory. I just wanna point out that we did take 100% of all referrals from the Carson City area. And at any given time, that's over half of our beds are filled with Carson City residents. We have a 25-bed unit. However, the state is just allowing us to fill 16 of them at a time. Some of them are detox beds, two of them. And then we save some for CPCs, Civil Protective Custody Individuals. But overall, Vitality has about 41 beds, and that includes the facility up in Elko. And Carson City is, fills almost a quarter to a half of them on a monthly basis. So the demand is pretty great. Are you, are you all familiar with Vitality Unlimited, or do you want me to review what we do, our substance abuse behavioral health program?
No, I think we're familiar with it. Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
You said that Carson City fills 25 to, what did you say, 40%?
Yeah, pretty much.
Of both beds, of both facilities, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
So as much as 40% of even the Elko site.
Right. So we're very grateful. We get a lot of referrals from the Carson City area.
Yeah. And how do the patients get from here to Elko if they are admitted there or accepted there?
Several different ways. There, we have, some insurances pay for transportation. We pay for transportation, and families take them up.
Okay.
And some go by train, some by the private transportation. And the way that's decided is usually individual situations. Sometimes they're court-ordered, and they have a history of running from our facility or from other facilities in Carson. So the judge, the lawyers will want them out of the area. And so we send them up to Elko. And then we reciprocate. If Elko has someone that, that happens to, we take them down here.
Okay. Was that all you had for us?
Well, I just wanted to mention our CCBHC, which we opened in February, and we've hired 14 people. And out of that 14, we really focused on advertising on the local level. We didn't advertise out of town to, or out of state to try to bring people in. So of the 14, we hired nine people from Carson. And two others for total were from Reno, but they bought houses and moved down here to Carson. And two are from Dayton, and we still have three commuting from Reno. But, and we do have a couple job openings because we just exploded. Within the first two months that we were open, we admitted 514 individuals for outpatient substance abuse and mental health treatment. And we maintained a caseload of around 380 to 400 local people.
Awesome. Impressive numbers. All right, any, any public comment? Any comment of the board?
Okay.
I do have one comment. If, I just, I wanted to ask Nikki if you collect feedback from the courts relative to the cooperative efforts between the courts and Vitality, or do the courts report back to you?
So for the record, Nikki Aker, the courts typically don't report back to me on it. When we went into the contract negotiations last year, I did speak with the courts, I spoke with the sheriff, and got positive feedback. We are sharing a building that sometimes can create, you know, some challenges, so to say. And we, and it's, it's on our part and their part. And we're trying to work through them the best that we can. One of the challenges has been that, you know, the food that we smell. So they have decided, they decided not to cook fish anymore during the week. So, I mean, these are the kind of things that, you know, you would think that that's not that big a deal, but it became a big deal. And it's just, we've worked through that, and they agreed not to cook fish anymore during the week.
As I looked at this, I think the agreement runs through 2021. Is that right? 2020 or 2021? So, you know, as you look at it, you can put an anti-fish clause in that next agreement.
Well, she has.
2020, okay. So you gotta live with fish for another year and a half.
And what we have, what we have set up is, I do meet with Judith and Vicky. We try and do it monthly, and try and work through some of these issues. So, and again, I say it's on, it's both sides. It's, you know, it's hard to live together in a building and make it work sometimes.
I can maybe offer a little bit more information. For, as part of our grant, we have to get feedback from the criminal justice system. And so we sent out an email encouraging them to respond to us as to how we were doing. And it was all favorable, that I seen.
Well, good. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate the cooperation there. So. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept Vitality Unlimited's report.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go to item twenty-three.
Let's go to item twenty-three, there's too much work involved in running these meetings, Mayor, you're, gosh. Twenty-three, it's a hard, hard act to follow. Twenty-three B, discussion and possible action regarding the Carson City Health and Human Services Director's Report, and I'm not going to delineate it, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to you, Nikki.
Okay, again, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, and just learning from experience, and I wanted to, during this interim, keep the Board of Health apprised of any legislative efforts that I'm working on and what happened. I do want to just give you a real brief synopsis of what happened and what we're going to continue to work on. So, public health funding, as you know, it did not pass, and that will be something that the public health professionals in the state of Nevada will continue to work on with the Governor's Office and the legislators. As far as tobacco and e-cigarettes, there were four tobacco control bills that passed through the legislator and have been signed into law. These four will support tobacco control efforts, one of them being the e-cigarettes, so those now will be taxed, and that tax will go through, it will go through the Department of Taxation. The Department of Health and Human Services will get a portion of that that will be distributed to the locals, and what that looks like at this point, we don't know. So, that's, and they're saying that it's going to be used for certain programs, mainly the youth prevention programs with the vaping. They did, within these bills, have comprehensive clarification and modernization of tobacco licensing and oversight, and they add vaping to the Clean Indoor Air Act, so where you cannot smoke, like in a restaurant, you cannot vape. So, and our behavioral health bill passed, the AB eighty-five, that was one that our Northern Nevada Behavioral Health Policy Board worked on, and this was clarifying and standardizing language in NRS four thirty-three A, which is the legal hold process. As most of you know, the Mobile Outreach Safety Teams, that did not pass, it got held up in some of the money committees. Hopefully, somewhere along the line, that will come back, I haven't heard anything on that yet. One thing that, another, I listed out public health wins here, and they, you know, continuing the family planning grants, these are the ones that come through the state, so that was continued. SB one seventy-eight was approved, and this requires each public and private school to adopt a policy concerning sun exposure and making that safe for our students, and that's looking at this, you know, taking into account skin cancer. Some of our losses, how the immunization data is collected and reported, why this was going to be important is in the case of an outbreak, that we could get that information quickly and respond quickly. Sex education in the schools, this is the second time that there's been legislation to try and get that into the schools and get it defined better, and that did not pass. And then also with access to healthcare, there was a bill that would require the licensing boards to find out where the practitioners are working. I think we've talked about it before with you all, that our license boards require our resident address and not where we're working. So what really is that, what does that access to healthcare really look like? So, that is our legislative update. Any questions?
Any questions for Nikki? Any questions of the public for Nikki? Nikki, I do have a question for you that is more than legislative, but more along the lines of just your Director's Report in general. I was talking to someone from an adjoining county recently, and they were mentioning that you're working on a regionalization, a potential regionalization of a health district, and I don't know if you've, there's been a presentation to the board, I hadn't heard anything about it, so I think it's something we probably are approaching a point where we probably need to hear something about it.
So, if I can address, so if you remember at the retreat that we did, where you met with all of us, that was some of the questions I was asking about, what are the pros and cons, how you all felt about that? This is a conversation that first started with our adjoining counties, and they were talking with the state, and then they brought me in right at the end. They, the state was applying to the CDC for a position that would come in and research this for us, because my comment to them was, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right, and they were not approved for that position. So, there's been some staffing changes, the individual that was first meeting with the other counties moved on to another position, she is now back in the position she was in, so I'm waiting to see what conversations start happening again. I do have all of your comments from that retreat. I also have asked staff to give me their concerns, comments, because I would like everything addressed, so I don't really, that's my report on it.
Okay.
Once, if meetings start again, I definitely will keep the Board of Health, and of course, you know, City Manager and everything else apprised of what's going on, but I don't have any where that's going.
Fair enough. All right, if there's no further comments, I will accept a motion.
I move to accept the Director's Report.
I've got more on here.
Oh, I thought you said, I apologize.
Yeah, because I've got the.
I thought you said you were done.
No, done with that item, sorry.
Okay.
I just.
Go ahead, we'll put that motion on hold.
I just want to briefly, we're in the middle of back-to-school immunizations, I want to get it out to all of you, if you know of anybody that needs vaccinations before going back to school. This week is the last full week, Monday's the first day of school. I've got individuals that are working very hard back at the Health Department. We, for the first part of August, as of last night, we have immunized about a hundred more people than we had last year. We're having a lot of people come down from Reno that started school on Monday, so we will have open for vaccinations, of course, today, tomorrow, we will be open on Monday, so any people out there in the public, please take advantage of that. And then with that, I just wanted to apprise also this Board of Health, that we are going through the re-accreditation preparation. Our re-accreditation is, we will submit in April two thousand twenty-one, but it, there's a lot of preparation to it. It focuses what we have learned about accreditation, it focuses a lot on that community, that quality improvement, and how we can improve our services, and how we can be accountable to the public, and be at a ready state of, up to the standards. So just letting you know that we're moving in that direction, if anybody has any questions about that. And then I'm going to move, I'm very happy to introduce Mike Orvitz. He's one of our registered environmental health specialists. He recently completed a fellowship in food protection, and as part of doing that, he's our second one to go through this fellowship. Brandon Gibb was our first one to go through, and he presented after he did his research project in the past. So he did present his project to his peers across the country at the Annual Association of Food and Drug Officials, the educational conference in June, so I'm going to let him just give you a real quick highlight of what his research project entailed.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Orvitz. Yes, two years ago, the agency, they decided to embark upon this quality improvement project, and one of the things that, that we did was, we were chosen for a research project, which was funded by the International Food Protection Training Institute. It was a year-long process, and we wanted to focus on the cooling protocols that are, that are conducted in our, within our establishments in our jurisdiction, our high-risk establishments, and we wanted to, to improve upon how we can regulate some of these establishments. And I'll read you some of the abstract. "The study examined the compliance of full-service restaurants in Carson City and Douglas County, Nevada, with a two-stage cooling process required by the Nevada Food Code, in order to increase the regulator's understanding of the degree of compliance and barriers to compliance. Improper cooling of foods is a foodborne risk factor closely associated with the foodborne pathogens such as Clostridium perfringens and Bacillus cereus." You really don't hear much about this in the news, because when people become infected with these agents, they, it's basically self-limiting, it subsides within a day or two. But however, with high-risk populations such as the elderly or pregnant, pregnant women or young children, it can affect them, it could have much more of a deleterious effect with these individuals. Aside from the health implications, there's also an economic impact. People that are affected with these agents, it can cost anywhere between four hundred dollars per infection, so it's, it's a quite serious matter which does not have much attention. So I'm really grateful that I was able to participate in this, this project. I'm proud to be a part of this, this, this agency, I mean, we're a very tight-knit agency, and we're, you know, just, we're trying to improve, and this is one of the things that we did. It was, it was, it's in a scientific journal, I'm very proud of that, and my supervisors allowed me to, the, the, the creative freedom to partake in this, and it raised a lot of eyebrows in this, back in June when I was in this conference, but if you have any questions.
No, it's, that's impressive to, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe we'll get some autographed copies of that journal, huh?
And then lastly, on my report, I did include a calendar of events, so you can see what's going on. Susan, our Chair, is at the National Association of Local Boards of Health today, so that's why not, she's not in attendance. There is the two thousand nineteen Nevada Public Health Conference coming up in September, and there we're going to have Jessica Rapp, who's presenting with an individual from the state, and she is presenting on our Casper survey. If you remember, at, I think it was two meetings ago, we had a presentation on that. And, and then also, the Casper report is on the CDC website. I've included that link in the staff report, so if you have a chance, go on there and look at it.
Done? The real done? All right, now that Nikki is really done, I would accept, well, first off, is there any public comment about Nikki's presentation? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Your motion is still on the table, and a second is still on the table. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Thanks, Nikki. All right, next item is presentation and discussion about the Quality Improvement Project, coordinated with the Adolescent Health Education Program, and we'll invite Sarah up, and I assume we'll turn it over to her, or are you going to introduce her?
Yeah. So, this is Sarah Johnson, she is a public health educator in our Adolescent Health Education Program, and we have a lot of different quality improvement projects that go on in the Health Department. We bring just a small number to you all for your viewing pleasure. So, so again, this is Sarah Johnson, and she is going to take over and let you know about her project.
For the record, Sarah Johnson. So my quality improvement project was based on teen comfort and, and knowledge of Carson Health and Human Services, and being an adolescent health educator and going out into Carson City and talking to the teens, what I was finding is that they didn't even know that we were on Long Street. They didn't know a lot of our services that we provide for them, including the clinic. And I wanted to improve that, I wanted to get the word out that our services, so we can, what my job is, prevention. So, again, that's what I just said, that the aim is really prevention, STD prevention, and of course teen pregnancy prevention. As you can see, our cases in Carson City, especially gonorrhea, aren't looking so good, and we know that a lot of that is fifteen to twenty-four. So in order to prevent that, we need to, I was thinking that we need to improve our comfort, the comfort for the teens to come over, and the knowledge of the clinic and where it's at. So I originally did a survey of Carson City teens at the Carson City Detention, which is my former employment, and what I got from it was that lack of knowledge of the, the services that we provide over at the Health and Human Services. And then we actually coordinated with Carson High in two thousand eighteen, a tour of our clinics, and part of the tour was a presentation that me and my coworker did for the freshmen of the health classes at Carson High. And after these tours, what I did was I surveyed those students that toured, and found out what they thought of the actual building. A lot of them said it smelled, I don't know if that was the fish, and, but a lot of them said that it was actually, a lot of it was positive, but there was a lot that didn't know that we were even there before that, so. And then we actually followed up, and two thousand nineteen, the teachers wanted to bring them over again, and we did that. So these are a little bit highlights of the surveys that were done in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, two hundred and eighty-nine freshmen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, two fifty-two, that's a lot of freshmen. And so it was mostly positive, they thought we were really friendly, so that was good, and, and really, but there was work to be done, and there's always work to be done to make sure that they are coming to the clinic and getting their services if they're sexually active. So after they were given, we had a lot of good things come from the, the surveys and the knowledge we got from the teens. One of the things that I noticed is teens don't want to walk back to the clinic, because if you know how we're set up, you have to go through the front doors, and then there's that front desk, and then you have to go to the clinic. Well, they don't want to walk all the way back if they're just coming in for condoms. So, basically, I brought up the solution, hey, can we have the condoms just at the front desk for those teens? And it actually has worked out really well, and they love that they're up there. Also, we did, so we presented for the health teachers, and the health teachers actually advocated for us to come over to Carson High and do our, our curriculum, our sex ed curriculum. So now we're over at Carson High, and I'm happy to report that this year, we're going to be teaching to all the freshmen. And then also, the clinic lobby was remodeled, so it's a lot more comfortable, and I have pictures later on of before and after, which are always cool to see. We also did, I went over and did, coordinated a group of volunteers from the HOSA group over at Carson High to actually do an art contest, and they facilitated it all, and the winners are displayed in our new lobby. So this is a before of our lobby, and then an after. So, and then we also have on the side, you can see that the art contest winners hung, and there's a plaque there, which you, you can't see in the picture, and it states that these are Carson High contest winners, to really link us with Carson High, and add to that comfort for the teenagers coming over. That's it, any questions?
Yeah, are you, so on the, on the artwork, are you rotating that? I mean, is it something you're doing every year? And then, that's first question. Second is involvement with Pioneer High? And third is, are you getting into the elementary schools to have discussion with those school nurses about services you provide? So I'll just throw them all out to you.
Great questions. Okay, the first question, yes, I do plan to go on over there, I wanted to wait till the teachers got a little settled before I bug them about starting another art contest or. another art contest or poetry contest. I was open to that, too. Yeah. And then the second was Pioneer. I have approached Pioneer, and Pioneer teachers have approached me to come over and do sex education, but they seemed that they weren't, they were a little iffy about it. So that's just up to the principal and what he wants to do. And then your third question was...
Interaction with the middle school nurses about... Interaction about, interaction with middle school nurses, and even Pioneer for that matter, about accessing your services, or at least a school nurse is aware of...
So Sheila's story over, the nurse, she actually put on a class for Carson City Health and Human Services to come over and do some presentations for the nurses. And as a part of that, in my presentation, of course, I had to introduce, hey, you know, I have this program, would you guys be open to me coming to your school? So that is something that I really think is important, too, especially, you know, that fifth, sixth grade for abstinence education. We are currently doing it in Story County. We're doing it at the elementary, middle, and high school. And we've seen so far, really good results with those kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I just want to compliment you. Yeah, it is. Compliment you particularly on the brilliant idea of making the condoms available under a situation where they will come and get them.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for the presentation. Any public comment on this topic? Thank you very much, Sarah. Okay, we'll take any last public comment about any Board of Health items or items before the Board of Health. Seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn the Board of Health meeting. And we'll pass that back down. All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're now on item number 27. We'll take up 27 Alpha. This is discussion and possible action regarding an interlocal agreement between Story County and Carson City to provide public guardian services in Story County. Ms. Paulson is the city manager. You want to take us through this, what you're doing, and why?
Yes, so we had Buffy here from the DA's office, but she had to go to court. She's our resident expert with public guardian. So some of the background on this, NRS requires that all counties have a public guardian. However, a lot of the smaller counties that had few cases can meet this requirement by contracting with neighboring jurisdictions that are in their same judicial district. So we previously had a contract or agreement with Story County, and that expired in 2014. They tried to go a different route for a few years, and then they recently reached out to us to see if we'd like to enter into an agreement again. They historically have never had more than five cases at a time. They currently don't have any cases at all right now. And we don't think that this would be a significant impact to our public guardians' office once we get everyone on board. And the DA's office also does some work, you know, on that, too. So they're going to reimburse us $150 an hour plus any mileage that's incurred on traveling up there. And if it does become, you know, a negative impact to our office, we can always cancel the agreement within, I think, 30 days.
Public comment on this issue? Questions in order.
So Nancy, what's the timing for a replacement, either interim or permanent, public guardian since Ms. Freilich has decided to leave our good graces?
We have the job open right now, and it closes today. We are going to try to look through the applications through next week and schedule interviews the week after, so the week of, I think it's August 26 or so. We won't be able to have anyone on board, I don't think, by the September 5 meeting, so I will become your new acting public guardian until we can get the new one on board.
Does that require a board action? Do we need to appoint him?
Yes, so on, well, yes. With approval by the board.
So at the September 5 meeting, we would appoint you as the interim or acting, and then hopefully, the following meeting, we would replace you.
Yes, that's our hope.
I just wanted this to reflect on the record, I did volunteer to continue to do it, but at the DA's office, thought it was a liability, and so, because I would no longer be an employee of Carson City. So that's why we have to bring it back to you and have Nancy be the interim interim until you hire somebody, but it shouldn't be long.
Or you could just stay on until we...
I was just going to say the same thing.
That's what I said.
Seems like a simple solution. We don't want to throw the Q word.
The Q word. Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, you got it.
That was good.
All right. Any other comments, questions from the board on this issue? And they know where we are in our, Story County knows where we are in our selection process, right?
I believe so. Buffy's been in constant contact with their DA up in Story County.
All right, board, are we ready for a motion? Yeah, I move to approve the interlocal agreement as proposed. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Post nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up the last item on the agenda. This is on the 27 Bravo. This is city manager's update.
All right, I'm going to try to do it from over here this time. So the first slide is the building permit valuation. For July, it was 8.1 million for a total year-to-date of 102.6 million, 71 million for residential, 17 for new commercial and industrial, and 14 in commercial and industrial remodel. So with seven months, we have already reached the total that we reached in calendar year On the residential permits, they continue to come in at a steady pace. For the month of July, we had 21 single-family detached, two single-family attached, and two manufactured home, for a total of 133 residential permits issued this calendar year so far. This is a new slide that I've added. This shows the building permit fees, the revenue, which is in the blue, and then the portion of that revenue that we pay over to Charles Abbott for contract services is in the red. As you can see, as the revenue goes up, the fees go down. So in fiscal '15, the fees as a percentage of the revenue was 67 percent, and now in fiscal '19, it was 52 percent.
The, so '20 is kind of faded because you don't have info yet?
Right.
So that's just where we were budgeted.
That's just the budget, yeah. And we always budget conservatively because we just don't know where the revenues are going to come in at.
And so you wouldn't give us this number monthly or quarterly, would you? Or is that your intention?
I could, yeah, I could add the first...
If you did, then it would be good if we could have the budgeted and the actual, so that we can kind of compare that.
Okay, yeah, I can see if I can add that on a quarterly. All right, so the following are a few of the planning applications that are under review that are scheduled to go to the Planning Commission on August 28. This is the abandonment for the Brewery Arts Center Plaza between the Brewery Arts Center Building and the Performance Hall. This would allow them to have one, essentially, one campus that would connect the two different venues.
Nancy, on that? So the first time they tried to abandon that, there were improvement requirements that were required as part of the special use permit, and they didn't have the money to do those. So are they saying that they now have the money to do those improvements to comply with the special use permit?
I talked with Stephanie a while back on this, and if this is what you're talking about, they can't make any improvements to that area. They could use it as a parking lot, which is what they want to do, so we'll have restrictions on that before it would get transferred.
So instead of putting in an amphitheater and landscaping, they're just going to leave the street there and they're going to stripe it for parking?
For parking, right.
So they changed their improvement plan, then?
Yes, I'm assuming they did. Otherwise, they'd have to do, there was underground, underground work that needed to be done is kind of what I remember from that. So this one, the applicant for this facility placed equipment on the ridgeline, and that was brought to the city's attention. The facility includes equipment for wireless internet services, and a special use permit is required because it's in the city's designated skyline area. This one is a 51-unit condominium development on a three-acre parcel on Roland and Oak Streets, which is off of Snyder, South Carson. And this is a tentative subdivision map for 29 single-family lots within the Schultz Ranch specific plan area. This is a tentative subdivision map to create 149 single-family residential subdivision on 21 acres. This is on Little Lane and South Solomon. The Planning Commission had some conditions that required minor modifications to this project, and the applicant wanted to update the plan to reflect the changes before it came to the Board of Supervisors. So that should then come to the board in September.
Is this, is it not the same developer that's existing there? Does anyone know? Yeah, I know that. What I'm asking is, is it a different developer, different party that's doing this, or it's just a next phase? Does anybody know? I mean, just curious.
I'm not sure I could find out and let you know.
I guess it's a different developer because this is a town home complex, and this is a single family. It's a different product type.
Okay.
So I apologize for not doing this update for a few months, so it looks like we've had a lot of turnover in the positions. So, but there is about 40, almost 40 position vacancies listed here, and many of those are due to employees retiring, and then a lot of it is the domino effect of, you know, filling from within. And so we move someone up to the next position, the other one becomes open, and so on. So that's a lot of what happened there. The big winner for departments is Public Works with 14 different positions. And a lot of it is just moving up to the next level. All right, the next thing is, from general fund contingency, we approved an hourly position in the assessor's office to assist with the implementation of the dev net system. They had some really labor-intensive data entry that they ended up having to do, so this person will come in and help them with that. And then, under the Capital Projects Fund and designated, this is where we were talking about earlier, the sheriff's office had a vehicle damaged in an accident, and we approved the replacement of that at almost $40,000. And then also, they needed funding to repair the meta burn incinerator, and that was a little over $8,000. And then in the 911 surcharge, we approved augmentation for the service support and hardware for the command vehicle, COM 51. It's currently inoperable due to insufficient network connectivity and outdated equipment, and that is in the amount of $20,000. I think that was figured out when they tried to take it out onto an incident, and they were having difficulty getting it to function properly. And then the last thing is an augmentation for RAVE Command View, which will enable the communications center to receive video from 911 callers, and that's $4,000 annually. And that's all of my presentation.
Questions and answers, this one? Hopefully, you know, we're spending a lot of money on comms, communications. You know, it's kind of disheartening to hear that we can't talk on some of these still, unless we're correcting that as we go forward. I mean, I get what you're saying, but anyway, hopefully, we're addressing the problem so we don't run into these issues as we go forward. Any other questions? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? Ann, you back there? What you got?
We were abandoned.
We were abandoned? Well, okay. Are we ready to take final public comment, then? We need to do, before we get that, let's do updates, Board of Supervisors update.
Mayor, real quick, I just have to run down to the courthouse for public guardian duties. But I just, this is my last board meeting. I wanted to thank everybody. It's been a pleasure. It was definitely a bittersweet decision on my part. You haven't seen the last of me. I'm sure you'll see me around. But Carson City is a special, special place, for sure, and I'm going to miss driving down here every single morning, but I will definitely come down here for dinner and for events and to visit all my friends. So thank you, thank you very, very much. You guys are special, and you know that. I don't have to tell you that.
We are special, too, and we don't, shouldn't have to tell you that either. You know, it's always bittersweet to see someone go on and move on to, you know, what they've always wanted to do in life. And I know that that's what you've wanted to do, you know, be your own boss and hang out your own shingle and stuff. So maybe we'll see you in front of us, the board representing someone, and you tell them, you know, I don't know what you should tell them, but, you know, Adriana, you've been an integral part of, both when you're at the DA's office and as a deputy city manager, an integral part of this board, this community, and our staff here. And as far, you know, I think I speak for all of us, you've executed very well, and we will miss you. I mean, hard to say that, but we will miss you. So good luck to you, and as we say in the Navy, fair winds and following seas.
Thank you, and thanks to Jason Woodbury for bringing me over from the state and for Nancy giving me the opportunity to have a lifetime for both. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
Bye.
All right, now go to court. All right. Tell that third branch of government that the power of the purse stills over here.
Although, last year, no.
All right. Okay. All right, let's take up further. Any other Board of Supervisors comments? Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I just wanted to indicate that we're working hard on the range. We did that. We're now open Tuesday and Friday nights to the general public, so we added two more nights in from 5:30 to 8:00, so that we can expand as quickly as we can. We have the plans in, and we'll be going out to bid on the bays, so all fingers crossed that we're able to move as quickly as we can.
Well, on behalf of all of us up here, I'd like to, you know, thank you and Supervisor Bunkowski for being on and the task force, but I've got both of you here. You know, it's a complex issue, and it's a touchy issue, let's put it like that. And it's a comfort to know that, you know, we've got, that you're ahead of the curve on these things and working through it to the best we can. We're never going to make everybody happy, but on the other hand, it's important that we get the gun range going again. And I think that you two, as well as your task force, have done an excellent job to date. Brad?
And I would like to correct the public record from this morning. We had somebody during public comment that said that the decisions of the task force were the decisions of the Carson City Rifle and Pistol Club, which they are not. They're separate entities. The club is operating the range, but none of the items that were mentioned in public comment were decisions made by the gun club. They were recommendations that are being made and will come to this board for final approval by the task force. So I just wanted to correct that on the record.
Good. I want to echo what the mayor said. Thank you guys for taking that one on. It wasn't, it wasn't an easy one. No, it wasn't. And I also want to apologize to you guys. I was out of sorts today. It's not my usual behavior, but I'm serious. I recognize towards the end, I went a little far.
I didn't see out of sorts at all. I thought it was a pretty good meeting here, so, pretty good. Anything further? All right, so it looks like, you know, I didn't expect us to do this, but I think we will now be able, if we want to make it the Fallen Officer Memorial at 2:00, we can do that. That's at 2:00 this afternoon at the sheriff's office. And I think that... And I think that's about it on updates. Did I miss anything? Nancy, on updates?
Dan says final public comment.
Final public, anybody on final public comment? I don't see anybody, so unless there's an objection, we will stand adjourned at one-twenty.
Good job.